We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, all of you. Welcome to the July 7th meeting of Bloomfield Township Planning Commission. For those of you who may be here for the first time, aren't familiar with what we do, let me just give you a little background. The Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of Trustees. We're a seven-member board. Volunteers residents. We're appointed by the Board, and we're advisory to the Board of Trustees. Any motion or any decision we make here tonight goes to the Board of Trustees. This is not the final. This is the opening round, so to speak. So, the way we work, we have an agenda here. You hope you picked one up. We'll have public comments prior to the presentations, which hopefully would we like to see on items that are not on the agenda, because you will have plenty of opportunity once the presentation from the administration and from the petitioners are told. You'll have opportunity again to come and make comments. So, I would like it if you could hold off on those specific items that are on the agenda till that. Anything else, of course, it's open. I want to recognize our township supervisors here tonight. Mike McCready, welcome. Thanks for coming. The first thing we do is take attendance. So, we have six out of the seven here, I believe. One, two, three, four, five, six out of the seven. So, we have a quorum, which means we can conduct business and have a good meeting. First thing we need to do for the Board of the Commission is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. You've all gotten them. Anybody have any questions or any comments or any corrections on the minutes?
I'm absent from that meeting.
What?
I was here at that meeting.
Okay, then, there is a correction. Mr. Atto was here.
I thought I was at the last meeting and it said I was absent.
We will make that correction, so the motion would be if you would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
As amended, sure. All right. Is there, everybody satisfied? Okay. Like a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Motion. Motion approved.
Support.
And support. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Public comment. Again, please come to the, if you would like to make a comment, hopefully on something other than what's on the agenda. Come to the podium, name and address, and everybody has the same three minutes for a comment. So, I'm going to, I'm going to open up public comments now. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Please come on up.
Just non-agenda items.
If, hopefully, right. Please.
Hi. My name is Jim Morgan, 6705 Timber Ridge, Bloomfield Township. I just have a question and would like some clarity from the Board, you know, and, you know, you guys bring everything back to the Board. What is the township's vision and plans for parks, recreation, and green space within the township? Because I had come to see the past supervisor, and I was told by him that the township was established where the schools would also be the parks, but that was no longer valid because of the Hedley Amendment that was passed. And the township could no longer support the schools in that manner, or else they would lose money from the state. So, since the Hedley Amendment, what has been the township's vision and plan for providing those parks, recreation, and green spaces?
I'm going to give it to you.
Sure.
The Planning Department.
Yeah, absolutely. It's actually a good opportunity for me to answer that question with a roomful of people. I'm Andrea Bibby. I'm the Director of Planning, Building, and Ordinance. I don't have a specific answer for you, but what I can tell you is at the end of 2026, Bloomfield Township is going to be engaging in their first master plan rewrite in about 20 years. That's going to involve a tremendous amount of public input, workshops. At that time, we're going to start developing and looking forward with the public's engagement of how we, how the residents see the development in 20 years down the road, future of Bloomfield Township. And certainly part of that you look at, at a whole, is green space, community facilities, and things like that. So, although I can't give you a specific answer what the plan is, I can tell you that we anticipate that as part of that master plan update, which is going to be pretty intensive, that that certainly would engage the public at that time to really be able to kind of bring ideas to the table and share thoughts on ideas of public open space. So, I know it's not the answer you're looking for, but I can at least tell you that there is going to be forward movement in the near future in terms of talking about the long-term appearance and look of how Bloomfield should be developed.
Okay. I came here because of the concern that over the last 10, 15 years, any large parcel of land, whether it be privately held or school land, when it was vacated, then was sold to developers, and there were no parks where there used to be parks. Or the availability of large parcels of land to provide parks for the community and enrich the community and create value for our township and our homeowners.
The only thing, I can just add one thing, is that you mentioned land being sold by either the schools or private. Private property, obviously, we have no control. Neither do we have control over the property of the schools. Schools is owned by the Board of Education, Bloomfield Hills or Birmingham, and they control that. So, the township had no say or no control over any of that. So, the point is that it would have to be, anything would have to be on public land, which, and the master plan, as Andrea said, we're going to look at, we'll be looking into all of that then.
So, maybe, because I don't understand, the township wasn't excluded from buying those school properties, right?
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I don't see anybody jumping up, so let's move on to the agenda items. First, we have two items on the agenda tonight. One is a site plan review for the enclave at 7200 Telegraph. The second one is a site plan, an introduction to a lot split at 7400 Telegraph, which is Temple Bethel. So, the first one is the site plan review for the enclave. Andrea, would you lead us off?
Okay, so my presentation, I'm going to walk through the Bloomfield Township Staff Report, which is our opportunity to review the proposal, share the results of the reviews, and also just give you an overall framework of the proposal. So, it's really meant to be kind of informational, and then give the Board an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have regarding the proposal. And then I presume after that, there'll be an opportunity by the applicant to answer any questions as well. So, with that, the proposal before you is, in fact, for, we have a application on behalf of Robertson Brothers Homes. They are seeking site plan approval via the One Family Residential Cluster Housing Options, which is one of our options in our zoning ordinance that allows for a certain style and manner of development for a single-family residential zone district. Highlighted on your screen, you can see the aerial on the left-hand side identifying the vacant property to the north of the temple, and then to the right-hand side, that is our zoning map. The zoning map, the light yellow on the right-hand side with the R1 indication indicates that the property is zoned, single-family residential. In addition to the proposed housing, the applicant is seeking site improvements, including a new detention basin, frontage landscaping, decorative walls, a gate, and three new roads within the site. As presented, the proposal is seeking to develop on a total of 12.83 acres. The total land area to make up the 12.83 acres includes 5.2 acres from Temple Bethel. So, that will, we'll touch upon that later as we talk about the lot split with Temple Bethel. But just to clarify, the proposal itself, as highlighted on your screen, you can see the overall layout, is proposed on a piece of property that is 12.83 acres. We do have our 2007 master plan, that we do always look to our master plan to determine what is the future land use designation for any property within the township. I do note that this property is noted to be single-family residential. It also recommends the designation of R1 can also be used for such places of worship, community buildings, public and private schools that serve the immediate community. So, it's single-family residential, but just noting that there are uses within the RN zoning district that would also be permitted other than single-family residential. This property is surrounded on both the northerly and westerly elevation with an existing subdivision, which is the Birmingham Farm Sub. They are adjoining Temple Bethel to the south, and then obviously on the east, they abut Telegraph Road. So, within our ordinance, we have the single-family housing cluster option. Within that single-family cluster option in our ordinance, it defines a means in which a development could occur in which that there would be a higher level of density encouraged. The way the ordinance is written is the higher level density would be encouraged to be within the first 360 feet of this property. And you can see a very simple schematic on the screen, which shows the division between the first 360 feet of Telegraph Road and the rear remaining portions beyond Telegraph Road. The reason why I'm pointing this out is because within our, the single-family classification of the cluster, they do allow for, and it intends to have, higher density residential near the main thoroughfare, and then slightly tapering off in density to the rear of the site. So, in this example, they would be permitted, the applicant has calculated the number of permissible units, which in this, in this instance, they're asking for a total of 38 units, 38 single-story, single-family residential units. But they are asking to spread out the total of their permitted 38 units instead of grouping them in a higher density towards Telegraph Road and possibly attaching them, which is another option within the cluster housing, is they could, they could also choose to do attached condominiums. In this instance, the applicant is stating that because they desire to have a single-family residential nature, they are asking to take their allotted density and instead of keeping it towards Telegraph Road, they are instead opting to spread those 38 units throughout the entirety of the site. So, I just wanted to make that a clarification. That will be a variance that will be required and requested before the Zoning Board of Appeals to address the extra density, or not extra density, but the way that it's dispersed about the site. In approximately, they'd be allowed approximately 14 units in the first 360 from Telegraph Road, and they are, where there are, I'm sorry, let me backtrack here. The proposal results in approximately 14 units in the first 360 feet from Telegraph, where 26 units is permitted. So, it's allowed to be higher. They're opting to be lower. And then, and then in approximately 24 units in the area beyond the first 360. So, I'm just trying to demonstrate the way the ordinance is written and the design in which is being sought by the applicant. So, I just wanted to clarify that the density is determined by the number of units, which is 38. However, they're opting to lay it out in the manner that you see here on your screen, and that would require a variance. So, the proposal itself includes, as I stated, 38 homes. Single access would be provided via a new road, which is Silverleaf Trail, that provides access to Telegraph Road at the northeast portion of the site. Silverleaf Trail is proposed to be bifurcated with a 16-foot wide lanes that combine to a 27-foot wide road with a 60-foot right-of-way. When we're looking at the proposed layout of these homes, each resident is proposed to have a two-car garage. As I stated earlier, they are meant to be single-story ranch-style developments. We have, as is a condition of any of our site plan applications, we did have a traffic study was required to be provided and presented to the township by the applicant. They did, in fact, submit a traffic study that was completed by Tetra Tech. That was reviewed by our traffic engineer, Fishbeck, in conformance with our township requirements. In a memo from Fishbeck dated January 28th, 2025, they found that the traffic study has been completed to meet the standards of the township. ADA accessible sidewalks are provided on one side of Silverleaf Trail and Sterling Lane within the development, specifically the area that encloses the open space that's located there in the center of the development. I also do want to note that a safety path already does exist along Telegraph Road in this area, and the plans show that a five-foot wide safety path will provide, be provided at the north end of the site along Telegraph to connect to the existing pathway. I do want to note that as part of the design of the entrance into the proposed development, the applicant is asking for a boulevard-style development, has some vegetative, some trees along that entrance to kind of provide that, the official entry into the subdivision. And then along Telegraph Road is, you can see on the screen there, the applicant is providing a five-foot-high berm, which will be heavily landscaped and vegetated along there with the intention in meeting the requirement that's in, within our zoning ordinance that states that a five-foot berm is in fact required for this type and style of development. The intention, obviously, is to try to berm and screen any visibility interior to the site from the major thoroughfare. In terms of actual setbacks in the proposals on the way that the design is, the applicant, the single-family residential cluster housing development requires a 40-foot rear yard setback. The standard single-family residential district requires a 35-foot setback. Under this, a cluster housing option, they are asking to not only meet the 40-foot rear yard setback, but they're actually including the, as you can see on the screen behind each unit, they have provided a diagram indicating where any outdoor patio or deck or living space would be permitted to extend into that rear yard. And I do want to note that they even, even measuring up to that patio space, okay? Not to the actual structure, but to the patio, they are still providing the required 40-foot rear yard setback. The intention of that is to pull the units a little bit further in, and then the intention is to then allow for additional screening and vegetation to be added along the perimeter of the site. I do want to note in terms of the setbacks for the front yards, the applicant, none, the front yard setback for each unit is required to be at least, the front yards, let's see, I apologize. The front yard is asking for a smaller setback than that's required. They are asking to have a 13.5-foot setback on units 22 through 29. And then they were asking for a setback to have 20 foot on the remaining units. A variance will be required from the Zoning Board of Appeals for them to request a smaller setback in the front yard than what's required by ordinance. In terms of the sides of the ordinance, the cluster housing ordinance, again, is written in a manner in which the units can be attached in up to five units. Because of that, there's a requirement of grouping, groupings of units. In this instance, we don't have groupings of units. So, what we're looking at is what is the, what is the required distance between units? What would be the required side yard setback? And based on the ordinance and based on using the methodology of a 35-foot minimum distance between units as required. In this instance, the applicant is seeking 14 feet total between units, okay? Our standard setback in single-family residential, just for comparison, would be 16 feet on each side, resulting in a total of 32, 32 feet, okay? So, so you can, so that is going to be another variance, is they are seeking to have a smaller side yard setback than what would be permitted. In terms of open space, the applicant is not providing any open space for the use of the general public. They are providing a small interior landscaped area that would be accessible by residents of the community. That is, that is the presentation that would include any sort of onsite public space, if you will, for the residents of the, of the development. Plans, the plans that have been provided indicate that the floor plan of each home is approximately 2688. So, these are homes that are ranging about 20, 2,700 to 3,000 square feet or slightly less, but again, all ranch-style houses. So, the height of the units will come in under, the applicant has indicated that the units will all be single-story, and that building heights will comply with the standard. The building height appears to be less than 30 feet, but the full height, as defined in the ordinance, should be provided in the, when they, if they were to get approved and apply for building permits, the overall height would be determined on that time based on the elevation. I mentioned the five-foot berm. That's proposed along Telegraph, which is required. I did mention the access to the site directly on Telegraph. I did want to note that they are providing a 50-foot taper lane in both directions. So, they are adding on the, a taper lane to the north and the south of the entrance to allow for a car to taper off and to get over and to access into the site or pull out of the site for a taper to then enter onto Telegraph Road. So, in regards to the landscape design, the landscape proposal that is highlighted here on your screen, the applicant is providing a dense vegetative screening around the north and western elevations. I do want to note that based on feedback the applicant received at the Design Review Board meeting, they have, in fact, responded with higher proposed trees. I believe the maximum height now is 14 feet? Eight? Okay.
We're proposed 12 to 10.
Okay, 12 to 10. Okay. So, I just want to note that they, they did respond, and they do, they are providing for that vegetative screening along the perimeter of the property. In terms of the engineering and other reviews, both internally and externally, anytime we have a application to our township, we do have our internal departments, as well as our consultants, review the proposal. We do have engineering consultant, HRC, that we use to review these projects, and we also use a landscape architect, who's dual and associates, that reviews the plans for, in accordance with our landscape requirements. So, I just want to note and respond to those reviews. Oh, and additionally, Fishbeck, who I'd stated earlier, who does the review for the traffic. So, we did have an opportunity to send this out for review. I do want to note that the, in the Engineering Environmental Services and Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, they have reviewed the preliminary plan. There are some wetlands that are located on the site. As part of the presentation this evening, I wasn't going to necessarily get into a whole lot of depth related to the mitigation of the wetlands, as well as the stormwater detention requirement. That will be something that will eventually come back to the Wetland Board, who is actually the same member, that members that are here before you, but you will come back, reconvene for another meeting in the future, which will also be publicly noticed. And at that time, we'll really get more into the details as it relates to the impacts and mitigation of those onsite wetlands. However, I do want to note that within the staff report and packet, we have included the review by Nizwander Environmental, who is our environmental consultant, and they do recommend, as proposed, they do recommend approval for the wetland mitigation as proposed. We will have a representative from Nizwander Environmental at the Wetlands Board hearing. But I just want to make a note that has been reviewed, and there will be some additional information forthcoming as it relates to the details of that. I also want to note that as part of their approval, they do require that the, the development would be required to monitor that wetland mitigation and the plantings and that entire vegetative plan for five years after development to ensure that all proper care is being taken to maintain and to manage the new native vegetation, as well as ensuring that everything is operating and designed as it is, and also keeping up with any invasive species that can kind of be an ongoing issue when you're, when you're dealing with these type of environments where invasive species can continue to be a battle even once things have been redone and redesigned. So, in terms of the reviews from our internal departments, I noted that Environmental and Engineering Services, they have, and HRC, as I stated, reviewed the preliminary site plans with respect to water main, sanitary sewer, stormwater, stormwater management and grading. Bloomfield Township's Engineering and Environmental Services Department, in their review letter dated June 30th, 2025, stated that there are some outstanding necessary revisions to be made before they recommend site plan approval to the Township Board and Trustees. However, at this time, they do feel comfortable recommending approval to the Planning Commission at this time contingent on the remaining comments in the HRC Preliminary Site Plan Report dated June 24th, 2025, being addressed prior to Township Board of Trustees. In terms of the Fire Department, the applicant has, is making a proposal that each individual unit will be provided with, with interior fire suppression. So, each house will be suppressed, thus eliminating the code requirement, excuse me, the code requirement in relations to the Fire Marshal's review that there is only one access into the site. Again, just noting that the applicant has, is recommending that they are, have fire suppression in lieu of having that second ingress or egress into the site. With that request, the Fire Department has submitted a letter within the report indicating that, that the gates would have to be equipped with a Knox Box switch system and operated so that they have full access to a gate if there were ever an instance where they'd have to access the site. In terms of the other, the Wetland Boards, I touched on that briefly. I did note that there is memos dated December 12th, 2024, April 9th of 2025, where their onsite findings, which is our Wetland Consultant, they find that as well as addressing the mitigation plans, they note the applicant has revised the narrative, and now they are correctly throughout the document, that the mitigation will be monitored for a period of five years instead of three. Additionally, the applicant is including, and there's a various array of invasive species that as part of this overall plan, they would be required to monitor and help maintain any invasive species and treat them over the course of that time as well. In terms of the building design and elevation, I touched on that briefly earlier. We're looking again at a single-story ranch-style development with an attached two-car garage. They are providing, there's no street lighting proposed. They are providing just lighting affixed to, you know, your standard lighting affixed to your, a single-family residential development. So, nothing out of the ordinary as it relates to that. And with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions. I know I really kind of spit a lot out, but I can certainly answer any questions the Board may have, or I also know that the applicant has a pretty thorough presentation themselves.
Okay, well firstly, bring it back to the Commission. Questions? Anybody have a question? I'd like to hear from the developer. Wanted to hear that first?
Yeah, let's do it.
I thought maybe there was something you wanted to ask. Okay.
I just have one.
Go ahead.
Sure.
When you talked about the front yard setback, eight units at 13.5 and the balance at 20, but I don't think you told us what the required front back, front yard setback was, or I didn't hear it anyway.
Okay. I apologize for that.
Sorry.
You know, I guess I do want to briefly touch upon, I guess, they can touch upon about the tree removal. I didn't get into the tree removal, but I can have them touch upon that. In terms of the front yard setback, the exterior is, let's see, 27, so up to 27, so 40 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, let's have the presentation then from the developer, the petitioner. Hi, come on up.
So, I'm going to call this up. I, you need to call up your You know what I'm saying? Got a little technical issues. Oh, this is a PDF, maybe? Oh, I gotta go like this, maybe? Sorry, we're just having a little bit of an issue here. Bear with us.
Yeah, I don't know why that's doing that. Let's see here. I don't really want to restart it. There you go. Okay. So now we're gonna go back to here. Oh my God, I'm sorry. So we're at presentation, let's see, better open. There we go. You're welcome. It just takes, you just gotta press a bunch of buttons and it seems to work.
It's like home watching TV.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate you being here today. Tim Lockhart, I'm the Vice President of Land Acquisition for Robertson Homes. Tonight with me is Jim Clark, our CEO, also Jack Flynn and Michael Dillon. And from our development consulting team, I have Brad Brickle from Noah &amp; Fraus and Tad Career from Land Design Studio. So first of all, I want to thank you for your time. As a former planning commissioner, I know that it's a thankless job. So here's a thank you. Appreciate you being here. Also thank you to everybody that's in attendance to give their opinions. So appreciate all of that. So I'm gonna go through and just walk through the project. It's, if you're familiar with our Villas at Bloomfield Grove property, we built on the former Hickory Grove Elementary Site on Loser, just south of Square Lake Road, actually just finished up at our last closing a couple of months ago. And hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. I think it's turned out beautiful. Of course, we had, you know, people voice opinions during that as well. We've made a lot of changes to that plan. You can see it's turned out very beautiful. The trees have really grown in. And it's a project that we're very proud of. In fact, we're gonna be given an extra check to the school district. So it's been a good project for us. But I'll, one of the things I want to say is, you know, we started around one and a half million to two million. Some of those are over two million by the time they put in. You know, they go to our design gallery and they'll put in upgraded cabinets and countertops. We did fine there, but what I'll say is we were really kind of missing the meat of the market. We would have loved to have been starting under a million, which is still a lot of money. But that was really a market that was, I think, untapped here in Bloomfield. So we had been looking for a location to build a, let's just say, smaller footprint, a little bit higher density to get the price points to where I think really the meat of the market is, and this was a perfect opportunity. It doesn't hurt that it's directly across the street from our office. I certainly couldn't have another builder building in our backyard, if you will, but it's a beautiful site. There are challenges to it. Certainly we'll go through that. But we think we've basically given you a very creative plan working through all the externalities that we have on the site. So let me get into it. So the site context, I think everybody's familiar with the location. It is on Telegraph. We all know how busy Telegraph is. I know because I drive it twice every single day. You've got multifamily, you've got, of course, the temple, which we're buying a portion of the property from to the south of us. You've got office, that purple office happens to be our office. So you can see there's a lot of intense land uses all around, all along Telegraph. I don't need to tell anybody that. We all know that. So it really creates a challenge. You can't really just put single-family, I know there are single-family on Telegraph, but it's not really conducive to doing that, especially at the cost it costs to do land development these days. So we really wanted to come with a plan that really paid respect to the site itself and created an opportunity for those missing buyers that I had mentioned. It's very important. I'll get into why I think that's important. Not just for Bloomfield Township, really for all of Southeast Michigan. But that's the growing market is that age group. It's essentially people that live in a, you know, colonial, in your township, in your school district. They stay there because they have nowhere to go. This is an opportunity for them to move to a ranch-style condo community where everything's essentially taken care of, if you will, as they age, instead of staying in that home. And that frees up that home for others, new families to come into your township. And that's something that happened at Villas at Bloomfield Grove. We had a lot of township residents that did that, well, people from outside as well. That we build, we build more of these probably than any other builder in Southeast Michigan. We know that market, we know the buyer, and it frees up that colonial, if you will. And it's just a need in your community. We know because we're building it and we know what the market's asking. So we think this is a perfect location, all things considered. Here's the site plan. And before I get too far into it, I do want to recognize that this is the first time you're seeing this plan from, as a planning commission. I understand that. Just be aware, we've been working on the site for a couple of years now and we've spent a lot of time and effort into studying the site, understanding the site. We've met with the neighbors a couple of times at our design center. We had them come over. So we've had a lot of interaction with them. We've met with HOA Board a couple of times. So it's important to us to let you know that this has really kind of stemmed from a lot of conversations we've had in the past couple of years and we've made a lot of improvements to the plan. And we do have it under contract. We intend on building on it. If we don't build on it, somebody will. The temple's not gonna just let it sit there forever, right? And they're very concerned about security on the site. So what they like about this site is it creates active security, if you will, on the property, which, you know, it's unfortunate that they have to worry about security, but it's a real thing. And this is something that is far more important to them than a public park where people could come from the public and they can't control that from a security standpoint or a high-density, you know, apartment complex, which I think could be built on a road like Telegraph. So it's something that I think is important to recognize that, something we'll build there. And really the temple's looking for a secure type of use. I think we could do a lot of different proposed uses on this. You know, I think multifamily could be there. We'd certainly, we build a lot of townhomes. We're not proposing that. But that's something that even your ordinance would allow, the cluster ordinance with attached housing. You know, we think this site, in all consideration of all the things that could be built here, is less impactful to the neighbors, and I'll walk through some of that. Again, it's more security for the temple. And we think this is the best land use to serve that market, as I mentioned. So getting into the site plan a little bit. And I'll just kind of work maybe clockwise here. One of the things that you'll, I think, hopefully will notice is we really try to address the buffer with our neighbors. It's always about the fringes and what we've provided here. And it's evolved over time, but we've evolved, what we've proposed here is a double row of evergreen plantings. In the last meeting we were at the Design Review Board, we committed to taking those from eight feet to a mix of 10 to 12 feet. So that's something that we're proposing to do. And it, you know, it helps with the tree calculations, but it's also the right thing to do for the neighbors. So those trees that you see, the double row of plantings, those are 10 to 12-foot trees along the perimeter with the neighbors. We've also backed those homes off. They could be at 35-foot per the existing zoning ordinance, the existing zoning on the site. We could build a two-story home at 35 feet to the property line. That would be a lot more imposing than what we're proposing. These are all single-story. So every single one of them's a ranch. And we're going to be 55 feet from that property line, which is pretty significant compared to 35 feet. So instead of a 35-foot two-story, we're talking about a 55-foot setback to a single-story. Within that would be a 15-foot deck, but it's still not even to that 35-foot line. It'd be at the 40-foot line demarcation. So we think that's important. We've tried to pull things away from the neighbors and added that buffer there. So just kind of, again, walking clockwise, I know Andrea had mentioned the MDOT. We did, we do have MDOT approval, preliminary approval at this stage for the taper that's basically just markings, demarcation markings. It already expands to a third, an additional lane there. It would just be devoted to this project as it comes in and then comes back out. So that was something that we've already worked out. We are proposing a gate. If you're familiar again with our Villas at Bloomfield Grove site, we do have a gate. I believe it's operational. We turned it over to the board to decide if they, HOA Board, if they wanted to make it operational or not. And that's just because we didn't want to destroy it with construction, to be honest. I don't know if they've opened it or not, but we're proposing the same similar type of situation with a gate, probably open at night. I'm sorry, probably open during the day only is probably what I think will happen there. But that's a nice, and we'll show you some views of that in a second here, of how that looks. There's a single point of access. We are proposing fire suppression to meet the fire requirements. We're not punching any roads through to the adjacent neighborhood. Everything will go directly to Telegraph, so there won't be any impact, which is what our traffic studies show, but no impact to the Birmingham Farms neighborhood. We are proposing a five-foot landscape berm all along Telegraph to act as a buffer there. So you'll see, you know, a beautiful landscape area as you drive south on Telegraph. And also creates, you know, that enclave feel for the future residents. Andrea did mention this. We are proposing to remove 485 trees on the site. However, we're going to be planting 644. So the deficiency is only because of the size of the trees themselves. So again, 644 plants, that's 17 trees per home, which is a lot. I can't fit anymore on there. We're gonna try. We will. We'll do more. If you go to our, again, Villas at Bloomfield Grove, a lot of those trees were added as we went along and they grew as we developed. And we worked very closely with Michael Dool on the ultimate, we were deficient as well on the ultimate number of trees required, the caliper inches. You'll see that that turned out great and we have a good relationship with Michael Dool. We're proposing a very similar thing here. So you'll see a lot of nice trees on this project. The other thing is the oversized pond at the southeast corner of the site. Right now, it's actually functioning as a pond for the entire neighborhood. It just is. And so that's created a wetland. This was traditionally farmed. Historically, it was not a wooded wetland by nature. That's been created over time because everything essentially just drained onto this property. Having said that, the wetland's not even EGO-regulated. So we don't have to worry about EGO whatsoever. However, the township does have its own ordinances and recognizes that as being regulated. These are very low-quality wetlands. But what we're proposing to do, and we've worked very closely with Nizwander early on, and they are very supportive of this, is we'll be mitigating the wetlands to be incorporated into the pond. So it'll really look like a wet, wetland, if you will. And that is oversized, so it is taking on more area than what the neighborhood requires. I think it's probably 30% more. It's probably more Brad can tell me if I'm wrong. But essentially, that pond will take on not only our water, but also what's coming to us from the neighborhood. We're about seven feet lower at that point, so. And again, it'll have that wetland look. So obviously, when we go to the Wetland Board, that'll be a topic of conversation, but I wanted to point it out now. The other thing you'll notice is there's a lot of green on the site. There's 57% open space. I can't say that very much about our projects. That, or anybody's projects, 57% open space is a lot. And these aren't single-family lots where somebody can take that, their, say, lot and put in a pool or a playground or something like that. Everything you see in green will stay green. It'll be owned by the HOA. It'll be managed and maintained by the HOA. Really what they buy is the box. So you buy your house essentially. And the area for the deck in the back. Everything else, it's all fee simple. Everything else is owned and managed by the HOA. So everything you see here will be perpetually, you know, kept to a very high, I know, because I know this type of buyer, very high degree of maintenance. And I think that's an important fact. It, you'll see, when I say 57% open space, you'll see 57% open space in perpetuity here. So that's important. And the other thing is you can see the buffer on the south side. The buffer on the south side is on the temple property, which is the next topic that you'll see because we have to do a site plan modification, a site plan amendment to incorporate this land into it. And that creates, again, that additional security there. So I'm happy to go through some of this in more detail as I get further along and any questions you have. I do want to point out, these are all ranch homes. So when you see this, it might look like there's a lot of them there. Couple of things on that. They're not attached. We could do four pluses, six pluses attached. That would be a huge massing. We're not proposing that. We think detached is a much better way to go. The other thing is these are single-stories, so what this is not showing you is that the massing is much lower and not nearly as compact and visually acute as you see it here. We've got a fly-through that Tad Career is gonna show you that I think really speaks to that. And I think it's important to see, when you see the site plan taken in context also with that fly-through. All right. So I know Andrea has spoken a little bit about this. This is what we call a parallel plan. It's probably hard to read, I apologize, but our plan's on the lower left. On the top right is something that is essentially a by-right plan. And by by-right, I mean it meets the setbacks, it meets the area requirement, which is 10 acre max. It's essentially two projects combined into one with a combined storm pond. We're not proposing to do that, but that's something that could be built here. Again, it's an attached product. It's the same units, just stuck together. And why that's important is Andrea had mentioned it. One of the variances we're seeking is, the requirement is a 35-foot setback or building separation from one unit to another. That is not a cluster type of housing element. But it really kind of speaks more to an attached product than a detached product. And that kind of gets me to the next point. We don't fit into any of your, any box in your ordinance. Your ordinance really doesn't fit what we're looking, what I think the market is looking for. In fact, our Villas at Bloomfield Grove project, we had, I think, 17 variances, which scared me, but ultimately, your ordinances don't allow this type of development without having some kind of variances. And the reason for that, there's many reasons for it. I talked about the building separation, 35 feet, that's really for attached. It doesn't speak to detached units. The front setbacks are a function of the fact that we have to base this on a 60-foot public right-of-way. These are not 60-foot public right-of-way streets. So they're 27-foot, which is exactly what we did at Bloomfield Grove and it's very traditional for this type of development. You've got other developments in the city that have that. It allows for parking on one side of the street, typically the one opposite of the water where you have fire hydrants, which is plenty of parking. And it allows for obviously enough pass for two cars to go through and fire. It's not a 60-foot right-of-way. So our setbacks that we're proposing for the variance are based on a 60-foot right-of-way, which in this case is kind of make-believe because that's not, that's not the roadway we're showing. In fact, at a minimum, we're gonna have 23 feet from a garage door to either a sidewalk or a curb. And that's important because we don't want cars hanging over sidewalks or over the road or anything like that. It's very important to us. So you're going to get, you're gonna get that setback. It's just, you know, we're held to a public road standard when in reality, we're doing private roads, which have a much smaller footprint. I think I talked to most of this. The other thing, since I'm talking about potential variances, again, we just can't fit the number of trees on here, but we do propose to meet your requirements through the planting of that and walking with Michael Dool as we kind of move through it. So again, I hate to keep referencing Bloomfield Grove, but I think that that really is a, kind of a earmark for what this project will ultimately look like. Smaller homes, but really the same kind of development, if you will. So I alluded to this a little bit at the beginning, and I'm having trouble seeing that, so I'm sure other people are. But really what this is saying, and this is coming straight from SEMCOG, it's basically saying, you're gonna have growth, but most of that growth is going to be in the 65 and up. And it's not unique to Bloomfield. This is, every other community that we build in has this same need. Most of your housing is really geared, should be geared toward this downsized buyer. There's just not much of it out there. There's not. And what there is out there is old and tired and requires a lot of money to upgrade. So this is an opportunity to meet some of that need. This will keep people in your community so they don't go to West Bloomfield where we're gonna be building another one of these. And again, I kind of talked about it, frees up that inventory for new families, but that is true. And I think that's important. The other thing that's important is it really doesn't have the same impact as a single-family. You only have two people living in a home, so there's less traffic. Typically, they're retired. A lot of times they load, lock and leave and they go down to, you know, Florida in the winter, that sort of thing. So the impact to the infrastructure is a lot less for this type of buyer profile than it is for really a single-family. But again, I think the main point is you have a need for this. In fact, you need 70 residents annually to meet the need over the next 20, 25 years. And that's coming from SEMCOG. So I wanted to point out that this is So I wanted to point out, um, that this is not necessarily a unique development in Bloomfield Township. There are a lot of cluster type of developments all along, mostly along Telegraph, somewhere along Square Lake, somewhere along Long Lake. But essentially, um, this type of product, project that we're proposing is not unique. It may be unique in the fact that we're detached, although some of them are detached. Certainly unique that it's newer, you haven't had one built, many of them built. Of course, we built, I guess, one in Loser, but, um, you haven't had many of these built recently. And again, you're, you're really, you really have a need for this. So you can see, most of them are along Telegraph, we're toward the southern end of the, of the township. Um, on the northern side, this is really everything north of, I'd say, um, probably Maple, um, or Corton. There's a lot, there's a lot of these, and we can point to them, I've got some pictures. But most of them are, they're, half of them are detached, half of them are, are, are detached, half of them are attached. Some of them are up to eight units per acre plus, right? We're proposing just under three units per acre, which is not a very high density in and of itself. Some of them have ten-foot building separation, so we're proposing fourteen as a minimum. Some of them out there are ten, you can even see one that has five. So, um, it's very similar in the type of what they're, the, the type of, um, um, market segment that they're looking for. But again, these are older homes that probably need a lot of work as well. And then on the southern corridor close to us, you can see a lot of them as well. And again, there's detached and attached. I didn't really show apartments, if I showed apartments, there's a lot, a lot more density in there. These are just what I think are comparable type of, um, developments. And these are just a Google, um, aerial view of some of these. You can see Bloomfield Chase, Hickory Ridge Village, and Woods of Lone Pine. Tightly knit, it's an enclave, and that's what people want. They don't want to be attached, generally speaking. They want to have a detached home, but they don't necessarily need thirty-five feet in between homes. In fact, that doesn't create that enclave type of, of, um, community that they're looking for. And you can see it evident in these projects here, and multiple ones, I could have shown a bunch of photos on this. And some of these are, are a lot tighter, I'm, I'm not showing this to say this is what our, our homes are gonna look like. This is a lot tighter, and this is existing in your communities along Telegraph. So we're not doing anything that hasn't been done, that's, that's way out of, out of ordinary. The only difference is, um, the ordinances just don't allow us to do this without some type of variances. There's just nothing that we can fit into the box. We did a PUD on Villas of Bloomfield Grove, we still had to go for variances. So, um, I've talked to Andrea about, uh, potentially, um, helping out with, you know, for future developments to, to, um, uh, look at your ordinances. We did this in North, Northville. They actually came to us, and we helped them create a new ordinance that would allow this type of development and create standards for it. So I think that's something that you, you should, certainly should consider, of course, as a planning commission. That's something that, that I think you probably would want to see, so. Uh, just getting into some, um, specifics, it's just under thirteen acres, one of the requirements, and it's very arbitrary. It can't be more than ten acres, um, to do the one-family cluster, I don't know why. But if we went to ten acres, that would create basically a, a, a remnant piece, and the, the temple is not interested in that. They, they want to have develop, something developed, and, and, you know, they don't want people hanging out on vacant land, they just don't. But, uh, again, it's just under thirteen acres. It is our one, and we're just proposing to develop under the one-family residential clustering, uh, cluster option. Thirty-nine, um, units allowed for ordinance, that was the parallel plan I showed you, we're proposing thirty-eight. One clarification that Andrea had said, they were, she had mentioned larger homes. Those homes that she had mentioned were more like what we're doing in Bloomfield Grove, these are actually smaller. They're about two thousand fifty square feet. Same sort of layout, right? They have a two-bedroom with a den, um, which, the, the layout, we'll have one plan, which sounds crazy. That's the plan people want with this home, and I'll show you a floor plan of that. But they are two thousand and fifty square feet, and then they typically finish out their basements. That's typically what you see, um, as well, um, for when the kids come back, if you will. They're all for sale, um, owner occupied, and again, they're empty nester ranch homes. We don't stipulate that you have to be an empty nester, that's, that's not the way this works. They, families just typically don't gravitate toward this type of development. So I'd say, out of the hundreds that we've built in the last, you know, three, four, five, six, seven years, I don't even know if I can, I don't think I need two hands to count how many families I think came in. So, um, you will see, this is geared toward that type of, of buyer. Obviously, new taxpayers, you're, you're not generating much today, this will obviously generate a lot more. We've got a lot of open space, as I mentioned, fifty-seven percent, um, and, and really, we're trying to cater to, uh, to, to residents, it's just underserved, there's just nothing really available, especially in the price point that I think we're trying to get. I think it's a sweet spot for, for Bloomfield Township. And shameless self-promotion, we've been around a long time, we've been around for eighty years. We are a good member of your community, we're, again, across the street from, from this location, and it's important to us that we do this right. So you want somebody that you can trust, you've seen what we've done on Loser, and hopefully you have our, um, you respect, uh, Robertson and what we, we can do, and we do what we say, and say what we do. I wanted to throw this out here, because I did mention we had met several times with, um, the neighbors, and we've made improvements. We've, we've moved the units off, as I mentioned, um, from those, um, property lines from when we started. And then the biggest thing is, we really, um, did a lot to those trees. So we, we had a double row before, but it wasn't nearly as dense as what we are showing now. So we went from eighty-three trees on the south, or on the north, uh, end, to a hundred and twenty-seven on the west, from sixty-six to ninety-five, and we just made a lot more trees in there, and now we've offered to make them ten and twelve-foot, um, trees, um, which is something we recently, um, resubmitted after the designer review board, um, because that came up. So, um, essentially, most of the changes I'd say are setback-related and, um, uh, tree-related. And I hope you can see this, um, might be easier to, you know, wreck your neck to see behind you, but, um, I think this is important because this shows some cross-sections. I've heard a lot from the, from the neighboring community about drainage, and Brad Rickle's gonna get into it a little bit here as well. But, um, but all of the drainage is basically coming our way. Um, and the reason why is because we're lower, and, and for ninety percent of the site, we're, we're, we're much lower. And this, um, you know, this provides opportunities, not only to, for us not to impact them, but for us to continue to take any water that's coming onto our property, but, um, also kind of creates some, um, unique, uh, areas to, to provide for some screening. So what we've shown here, that, that top one, you can see here. Oh, that's slow. This top one here is basically up along the very northern, um, perimeter, like the northeast corner of the site. And this is showing a perspective drawing, um, that's the actual, say, size of that, of the neighboring house, that, that particular house, in relation to ours. So what I wanted to point out here, and it's hard to see here, but you can see this roof line, that's the roof line of what could be built right now, today, without even coming to see you. It's a two-story, single-family home, thirty-five feet from the, from the setback line. That could be built today, and that goes all the way to this line here. We are proposing to, to build a ranch, single-story, at fifty-five feet, so another twenty feet from there, plus it's a single-story. And of course, I mentioned the decks, um, being within that, but not even to that property line. And these are the upsized trees, um, they'll grow bigger, obviously, over time, but that creates a, a good, um, initial impact, um, especially from the, um, first-floor viewing to, to first-floor viewing. These, the one on the, uh, bottom here, um, this is the house, this is really our, um, sort of our southwest corner, um, if you will, over here, and that's the existing house there as well. Here's a little bit different, and Brad will get into this a little bit, there's a berm there, so that's about the one area where the water's not coming on our property, kind of the berms. It'll go on our property and go onto their property, it's, there's no crossover. But I wanted to show this, just, just to show an accurate, um, depiction of how the site kind of drops. And again, you've got the trees here, um, there is a power, power pole along, um, the, the property line all the way on the, um, neighboring property on both sides, just to point that out. And then again, the same thing, this would be a two-story, a thirty-five-foot, as opposed to fif- uh, fifty-five-foot that we're proposing. So I'm gonna ask Brad Rickle to come up here and just really talk a little bit more about the, the drainage concerns, because I, I know you've heard it, I know the board has heard it, and it's something that we want to make sure, you know, from a professional, um, just what the accurate, um, you know, condition is.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, good evening, my name is Brad Rickle, I'm a managing partner at Newak and Press Engineers. And as Tim kind of gave an overview of, we are aware there's some drainage concerns, you know, adjacent to the site. And what this depicts here is, is the existing drainage pattern that is out there. So as you can look along the north and the west, the majority of the property sits substantially higher. It drains from roughly the middle of their lot toward the Robinson Brothers' proposed site. So what we have to do in order to accommodate that, and, and this one thing I want to make clear, is that we are not allowed to block drainage, it's, it's a requirement, it's not something that is permitted. It doesn't matter if, if it's been draining onto their site for a hundred years, it's the burden of whoever's developing this property to take that drainage on and to maintain that drainage. So they are not allowed to block that drainage. So what we had to do in order to accommodate that, if you look at the lines in red, they essentially, you know, route the whole perimeter of the site. And what that's there to do is to pick up any off-site drainage. And we have to design the pipe sizes and everything to accommodate any flow from off the site. So what we would do then at that point is, we would route it around the site, and it would work its way to the detention pond. Um, I'm sure a lot of you are aware of the, the point of a detention pond, but I'll just kind of reiterate it. So there, there's two main focuses on a pond, is it's to clean the water prior to getting into the municipal water system. What it does, you have these settling areas that, for roughly a twenty-four-hour period, it'll sit, clean that initial flow of water that really hits the system, runs through, and it'll sit there and dissipate out. The second function is to slow the water that gets into the drainage system, the existing drainage system. So for instance, um, the township has adopted the Oakland County, um, ordinance, and that's a hundred-year stormwater ordinance. And to, as Tim's point, we oversize the pond substantially so that it can hold even more water than were required. And essentially, the point of that is to slow that water to a release rate that will extend from two to three days, is how long that pond will take to drain from being full at a hundred-year storm event, back down to the normal elevation. Um, and we have already been working diligently with the township, with the township engineering consultant, and we are all fully aware of, of the concerns, and I'm here just to say that we, you know, are obligated and required to not block drainage. The next slide, Tim, you may have to help me. Just the right button, that one, okay. I mean, as part of this process, Robinson Brothers has committed to doing like a preliminary drainage study of that subdivision to the north. We were just kicked off, and kind of what this depicts is, all the natural grade, essentially just shy of Maple, a portion of that sub does drain north to Maple, but the majority of that whole entire area, not only the sub, drains southeast. And there's actually seventy-foot of fall, which is, it seems like a lot, which it is, but it actually falls seventy feet, and that's what those countries depict, down toward our site. And so some of the things that we have noticed upon doing some site inspections, we haven't gotten the nitty-gritty, but some of the site inspections out there, we have noticed, obviously, the one that jumps out is there's no detention pond there. So that's a, a, a big potential issue of why there's some potential flooding. You'll probably see ditches overflow, go over the roads and things like that, and keep working their way down that hill. That obviously isn't the case in the Robinson dr- development, because we are meeting all, or exceeding all stormwater standards. Another thing that we noticed is, there's a lot of sediment accumulation in the ditches over time. I'm not sure exactly when the sub was, was built, but you'll see some yards don't even have any ditches currently. And so some of the drainage culverts that are about to, you know, be within a ditch, are partially blocked, fully blocked, until they get to a point where all that water falls down to the road just north of us, and obviously, it just keeps overland overflowing. So those are some of the things that we just noticed, we haven't performed the detailed study at that point. But, I mean, just to kind of put it in perspective, that sub releases about fifty CFS of undetained water, where we're releasing, releasing two-point, two-point-eight CFS. So we're, we're releasing about six percent of the volume of water that's being released as part of just the sub, not that whole area, just the sub that contributes to that drain just to the north of us. It all ties in on Cedar Brook into a, um, thirty-six-inch storm sewer that then crosses the road to the Nichols Drain. And that's all I had.
I just wanted to show the, um, elevations in the floor plan real quick, and then Tad's gonna do a quick, um, fly-through. These are concepts, but, um, really, we're looking for more of a modern kind of look than what we've done at Villas of, at Bloomfield Grove. Again, they're a little smaller, about two thousand square feet, two thousand and fifty square feet, but they are very similar in a floor plan, in the floor plan. So if you'd come out there and, and walked our, our plan, um, the Hickory plan there, this is, this is very similar to it. And essentially, what you'll see is, um, everything's open, you've got the great room, the dining room, the kitchen, everything's open in that respect. There's a nice master bedroom, um, with, with ma- master bath, of course. And then a bedroom up front, uh, with an en suite and, um, a den as well. This is actually a little smaller than the one, um, that, that we're proposing here, but roughly the same, uh, concept. So, um, this is what people want, we're gonna have one plan, and I don't think they'd take anything else, to be honest. So, um, this is just a, you know, a little bit of an elevation of, um, what you can see at the site. I do have this embedded, um, it's just a couple minutes, if you can, um, bear with me, I think it's important for Tad to fly through it. But Andrea, this is on...
On the thumb drive?
On the thumb drive. Yeah.
There you go, if you just go to the left and... It should be under USB.
USB.
While Tim's doing that, good evening, I'm Tad Creer with Land Design Studio. I'm a licensed, uh, professional land planner and landscape architect. I'm also a resident of Bloomfield Township for thirty years, and I sat on that dais for, uh, some time with, I see at least four of you, uh, familiar faces. So this is the first time I've been in front of you since sitting, sitting up there, so. One of the things, uh, well, another thing is, um, I've been working with Robertson for over twenty years, and it's, uh, they've been a phenomenal client, they've been really true to everything they say they're gonna do. They work so well with the neighborhood associations, and it's been, it's been really cool as a land planner, um, and to be able to work on a project like this of such a high quality in my community for over thirty years. And, uh, I, I just want to point that out. Also, Hickory Grove, we were the land planners and landscape architects of that, and that was, we're really proud of the work there, and I think this is very similar. Also, Tim pointed out that, um, this has been over two years in the making, so a lot of back and forth with the consultants, the staff, the staff consultants, and, uh, this, this didn't develop overnight, so, um, that's important. So we were talking about it, and when we do graphics in land plans, sometimes we, we try to do things so they don't look so dense or whatever, and I said, "Well, what if we just tried a drive-through this development and saw what it looked like as you would visualize it?" We've never done this, this is the first time, so bear with me. We have the driver who's exceeded the speed, he's already been issued citations, and for jumping the curbs, we have a couple hiccups along the way, but, um, it's, I think it's a cool, um, tool for you to sort, see what the development looks like. And I think most specifically is the scale, as Tim had mentioned, the one-story ranches, and not, you know, towering over like so many of the developments that we work on that are two, two-and-a-half stories. So I think that's really important. But, uh, given that, we can jump into it, I don't know if you can do a full screen. I'm gonna stop it along the way a little bit, but, um, this is the grand entry to the development. Actually, can stop it here real quick. We have lots of decorative gates, um, ornamental planting, seasonal landscape, beautiful lighting. We actually had some renderings we submitted, um, as part of the plan, showing what this would look like in the evening. Unfortunately, the gates aren't all the way open, go ahead, Tim, and our guy will kind of drive through these, or over top of them. There's the boulevard on your left. And one of the things I want to point out is, you're coming down the development here, that large park area, we'll stop, and we get up there on the left. In plan view, it's not really perceived what it is, but let's go a little further, a little further. It's actually a half-acre open space, that's good, let's stop it there, um, which is pretty significant in this. One of the things that we've been struggling with, and, and as a planner and designer, I've been working with Robertson Homes and other developers, is how do you amenitize these open spaces? And we think we get it right, but then we go out, we look at these years later, and we notice they're not being used. We've done bocce courts, we've done gazebos, pergolas, outdoor patios with tivoli lights and, and fireplaces. What we've kind of learned is, it's kind of nice, and you go look at these older developments, the HOAs over time decide what they want as a community, and what's important to them. That could be butterfly gardens, that could be, there's actually development Robertson did in Troy where they have those, um, book drops. It's a little thing, but it's a nice amenity to the development, so these sort of occur over time, and for this particular project, we're proposing that. Again, this is a half-acre open space.
Again, this is a half-acre open space, some of the homes back up to it with undulating earth forms. And I'm calling it like the arboretum park. We have a lot of trees we're putting back on this property. So we've created a lot of variety with ornamental trees, flowering trees, columnar trees to define the open space and that sort of thing. So you sort of get an idea of it. This is where the driver's not looking forward. And stop it there, Tim. So again, that drive is heading west into the development from Telegraph Road. And if you see in the background of this little stub street here where there's three homes serviced off of that, those evergreens, yeah, right back there, those are the ones, I think there's like 197 total just adjacent to the residential property that have been upsized to that 10 and 12-foot from eight-foot in your zoning ordinance. And it's really, you know, and those trees are going to grow. So a double row of those triangulated, it's going to be a pretty dense buffer at the day of planting. And continue on. Again, the scale of the ranch homes, the separation, you know, the open spaces. Stop there for a second, too. One of the other things I wanted to point out is in this particular price point of home, what you're seeing in the renderings are sort of a baseline landscape package. If we go to Bloomfield Grove or some of the other communities, what you've seen is the homeowners have really upsized everything, added a lot of landscape, and just taken it to the next level because of the price point. And then again, the maintenance is so phenomenal. So this is looking a little sparse, but this is kind of the way we start as a baseline. And some of these homes will have three, four times the landscape that you see, and it's, it's really impressive. There's a little cul-de-sac island in here that sort of breaks up the mass of the homes on that eyebrow is what we call it. And then coming down, heading east now, seeing some of the homes. Again, the sidewalk and the interior, that sidewalk's actually a fifth of a mile, so you could loop that five times, and you would have a mile walk on the inside with very few homes or driveways to cross. That's another little stop there, another little pocket park that could be programmed and done different, different kinds of ways. There could be benches there, there could be a garden. Community gardens is another thing we're seeing. We've built some in some communities, and they don't get used. And then you go back to some other communities, and they have garden plots that people are doing. So that could be a spot, too, in the front of that where that could be developed as a community garden. The other thing, the setbacks, let's stop here one second, too, Tim. I want to talk about those, those front yard setbacks. If we were to follow the ordinance and do the 40 feet from that right-of-way, we would just have a lot more impervious surface with the driveways. We have more than enough parking between the two-car garages, the drive aprons, and the on-street parking. So it's, it just, it really makes sense. It's, it's an ordinance thing where we're asking for that deviation. Or variance, and more of a buffer, yeah. So it's just, it's, it's the right feel. And again, those communities that Tim pointed out earlier, I actually worked on some of those over 30 years ago, and they work, they work fine, and we don't have that excessive driveways. This is where the driver gets a little crazy. He's going to jump the curb here, and we're going to exit back out to Telegraph. And then, as we go forward here, the final thing I just want to point out, we are, we are in Telegraph Road. I think, Andrea, you could correct me. Some of the last traffic counts I've seen are upwards of 80,000 cars a day.
Why I don't know, I'd have to look at the...
Yeah. I've heard 60 to 80, depending whether you're north or south. So we're, we're challenged with that. And so again, it's, this is something that, that we're really proud of, and I think the team should be commended for the work so far that's gone into this. The last thing I want to say is probably about six, eight years ago, we were looking for this kind of housing community for my in-laws to downscale and be closer to home. We couldn't find anything close to this. So we think this is really a nice addition to the community, and as Tim pointed out, many of the other communities in southeastern Michigan or Oakland County. So that's it.
Tad, it was nice having you up here, but it was nice to have you present. Good presentation.
So I'm, I'm finished. I'm happy to answer your questions. I assume you probably want to open up the public here.
First, I'm back here, so...
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back here to the commission. Any questions, comments, anybody? Neil?
Yeah, just, first of all, thanks for the drainage presentation. That was one of my concerns, and I know that it's something that was brought up many times during the design review board. So that's really important. This is a question that may go to Andrea. As far as the berming, so it's a five-foot, five-foot berm. Now, that's for the length of the project along Telegraph. What do we have at Bloomfield Chase? Is that five or higher?
Oh, I might have to defer to the landscape architect on that one. I would presume it's probably Bloomfield Chase. Would you imagine, I would...
That's 30 years ago. It might be a little higher.
It, it appears to be higher.
Yeah, I think it's higher.
Yeah.
We could certainly look into that for comparability, but I do feel like maybe it is slightly higher than six feet, but we didn't do, but I don't, I don't know. To answer your question, sorry.
It seems higher, and it seems to be accomplish what it's supposed to accomplish more so than this presentation. So I certainly would like to look at that and see what it is, so we can possibly incorporate that into this plan. And the other item certainly has to do with the, the trees. And pleased to see that you've increased the size of the trees, and there continues to be a deficiency, so I'm going to try and help you take care of your deficiency. I really would like to see those trees at 14 feet, 14 feet all the way around. It would be very dense. If you want to see an example, the township required 14-feet spruces at Oakland Hills along Maple, and it is dense as far as double density in front of the parking lot and in front of the greens and grounds building. It may be, it has not been planted there yet, but it may be three to four rows of density. But they're all 14 feet, and I have to tell you, it makes a tremendous difference when they're planted at the beginning of the project at that height as opposed to eight, nine, 10, or 12 feet. And not only will, I know it's going to be more expensive, obviously, but it's going to look really good, and it's, more importantly, it's going to help the neighbors as a buffer. They won't see the project as much. And I know there was a concern about some noise. I'm not sure I totally agree that you're, you're going to cause more noise, but however, it certainly will mitigate some of those concerns since the, the trees you'll be planting will be deciduous as opposed to the, some of the trees that are in there now that are not. And so that's certainly something that I would want as part of one of the conditions in approving this if the planning commission decides to move forward with this, if there were recommendation to move it forward.
Anybody else?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Go right ahead. I know you're there, but I actually have the first question for the engineer. When you design this project or any project where there's zero water coming from somewhere else, it's easy for you to figure out the CFS, which is, not everybody knows what that means, the cubic feet per second, and then you can design your pond accordingly. And I'm sure you know what it is for your site. Question is, how do you calculate that from the sites? You showed us lots of drainage coming as, maybe as far north as Maple, and there's about a 70-foot drop, so...
Right.
How do you calculate the cubic feet per second coming from those sites that are not part of your property?
So you essentially do. It's, it's standard formula like Q equals CIA, and then use an intensity that's been figured by a lot of smarter engineers and myself over the years. But what that slide was to convey is not that that's coming to our site now. That's just naturally how that whole area drained. So it's being picked up by a storm drainage system within that sub to the north. But we're able to do it based on size, based on amount of, we look at the impervious areas. We look at how much roof there are, how much roadways, sidewalks, driveways, and we come up with an impervious calculation to do that. And so then that generates a certain amount of volume over a given period of time.
So I, I guess the question is, and obviously, we haven't heard from the public, and we will hear from everybody and take note of everything that they say, as, as well as the presentation was, we're going to hear both sides. But when you say you'll oversize the pond, is it 50% more than what you need? I just want to...
It's about 25% more.
25%.
And that'll help offset. So what's actually draining onto the Robert, proposed Robinson Brothers' site from the other subdivision? It's essentially just from the middle of the houses around the perimeter. It's not that entire land area. It's kind of hard to depict, but it'd be pretty much from where the north end of the blue arrows start. So if you take that strip across that whole, those rear yards, that's what's falling. The rest are falling to the north into the existing drainage ditch that's there. And also, the, the other benefit we have is because we're much lower than the site to the north waters, we know, unless it's pumped, it's not going uphill. So all that gravity will...
I'm not an engineer, and I'm not pretending to be, but I just want to make sure, because we're going to hear people say that it's going to affect their drainage. But on, for your benefit, if you took on more water than your site can handle, how, are you comfortable that the 25% increase is going to handle the water?
Yeah.
I, I just don't know how to calculate it. I can't tell you if we agree or not agree.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll give you a little more input on that. So it's designed to a certain rate for a 100-year storm. So we say it's a three, four-inch pipe, let's just say, leaving our site. So what happens is we have to design now an overflow. So say you have a storm event that is greater than 100-year, okay? So what'll happen is then that fills up, gets, fills the pond, and then it goes into an overflow pipe, and then that allows that to enter the system. Once you hit that 100-year overflow, that exceeds the design capacity of everything it's connecting to. So from there, you know, because we are so much lower, it still would not ever back its way up into the site above us. But it does have an overflow capability. If that doesn't work, the next thing is they have an overland, kind of, it's hard to tell, the southeast corner of the pond, it's a riprap, oh, yeah, right in there, it's a riprap overflow. So if all the storm sewers in all the area can't handle the drainage, then what happens, it would go over the bank of the pond through a riprap, which is like an armored cobblestone area, so it doesn't erode, and it would overflow that, and then it would drain out into the roadway. So it has to drain directly to a right-of-way. That's the third, I guess, backup restriction that the county has.
Here, outlet into a county drain also?
Yes.
Would it happen, does the drainage that's being already collected in the sub go to the same drain? Or is it a different drain?
No, the same drain. The difference is, back when that was designed, they didn't have a restriction. So they were able to just fully discharge all water that came. Obviously, they didn't know some of the things that we know now, right? So now we're at a much more restrictive rate. So to put it in perspective, so typically, based on this size, we would be allowed, and I'm going to throw some numbers at you, but 0.6 CFS per acre discharge, okay? That's how much per acre we're allowed to put out. But because the county, they have different restrictions in different drains. That's their normal ordinance, okay? They're actually only allowing 0.22 CFS, so about a third. So we're discharging only a third of what we're allowed to 98% of the time. So they're allowing for, because they want to make sure that there are no issues with their drainage system. So they're being more restrictive on us on that discharge rate.
Oh, so you can't even discharge the 0.6?
Not 0.6 CFS per acre, no. 0.22, so they're being more restrictive.
Okay.
Yeah.
For that site specifically?
Anywhere, they break it up based on drain and segments of drain. So they do an analysis of the capacity of their drains. So they are very aware of if there's any potential issues anywhere, so they'll change that rate to ensure or to help ensure. Obviously, if we get a 300-foot or a 300-year storm like we had, I don't know, 10 years ago, there's nothing you can do about that. But what they do is they modify their drain release rates to accommodate any concern with flooding in different areas.
And that's Oakland County? Can anybody, any municipality jurisdiction do that, or?
No, except their drain.
Oh, it's their drain.
Like the township would require us to, you know, meet the, the county ordinance, but because we're tying into a drain specific, the, the, sorry, the Water Resource Commission, they would dictate what that release rate is, because it's their drain.
I know you didn't comment on the sidewalk, but I don't know who wants to answer, but since, since the presentation talked about a 60-foot right-of-way, where there's roughly 27-foot, is that back a curb to back a curb? So that leaves 33 feet of right-of-way that's obviously not necessary if the roads are smaller. So within that 16 and a half feet on each side, where's the sidewalk within that? Because we're, we're talking about the, the car not being protruding, so within that last amount of unused right-of-way, what, what part of that dimension does the sidewalk fall into?
Yeah, it'll follow the standard. It'll be one foot off that essentially 60-foot right-of-way line. But based on their product, the way that the houses sit back, the garages sit back, it allows for that.
Okay, so if the walk's, you know, theoretically a foot off the right-of-way and the house only has a 20-foot setback, basically, you have 21 feet from the face of the garage to where?
23, there's a three-foot offset. 23 feet, there's a three-foot offset from the front of the house to the garage. So you'd have at least a 23-foot area for the car.
Three sets back from the...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
Yep.
Very good. The other thing that you mentioned, well, I guess it'd be Tim mentioned that there's, there's quite a few variances, and it's due to the fact that, you know, 35 feet between units, when there's four of them and you start splitting them, then it, it burns up a lot of space. I get that, but how many variances, because I was trying to list them, and I, I just want to make sure that I and we as the board and the people in the room understand what they are. Some of them, again, are, have, have, make common sense why you would need them, but I still want to know. So I'm just trying to make a note here, and I, I don't know if it's a, you can answer, or Andrea, but I, it, it looks like there's a, there's a variance for the side yard setback. Obviously, we just talked about the 35 feet in between each building. We don't need one for the rear because you're in excess of the 40, you're up to 55, I believe you said. And in the front yard, we just talked about, there's a...
Yeah, I can, I can give a brief kind of rundown of them. You know, again, there's, there's the dimensional ones, which is the front setback we've talked about, the side setback we talked about, and then the corner side. The corner side's 30 feet, as you can see from that fly-through. We're showing a 15-feet. There, there was a lot of green space there. So those are really the dimensional ones, which I, I believe because of the product makes sense.
Front side and the corner lots, that's three.
Correct.
And then how many variances involve, again, we're not talking about whether they're good or bad. We just want to know the number. When it comes to signage and gates, are there multiple, or is it one variance for, for the walls and gates? Is that considered one, or is it considered multiple?
We would provide, that would be one before the zoning board of appeals, the entrance accessory structures, if you will, and a front yard is how we would look at that.
And is the caliper issue considered a variance also?
It is. What we're proposing with the caliper, and not to get in the weeds too much, but with the caliper inches, there are a lot of really poor quality type of trees. So, and some non-native exotic trees like a mulberry or a, you know, Japanese red cedar. And then there's invasive trees like box elders and cottonwoods. What we're asking for is those kind of non-native trees to be removed from the requirement. Everything else will meet. So, you know, we're still short, but we're going to be providing it with upsizing, as we mentioned. So your, you know, your comment, trustee, about the 14-foot trees, I'm not sure we can get all 14 feet. Maybe I'd ask for maybe like a 12 to 14 or something like that, but that could go toward reducing that requirement as well. So I think we'll make it, but, but the, the specific variance is for those non-native and exotic trees to be exempt from the requirement. Most communities actually don't have those.
It makes sense, but again, I just want to make sure I understand.
And then also replacement trees in the green belt as well. I think Nice Wonder, now, Michael Dool says that, and I couldn't find it necessarily on the ordinance, but that those trees along the green belt could not be counted toward the requirement. We can't fit any more trees on here, so we're asking for those on the green belt to be counted as, as well.
And then, for example, again, I'm just listing them because I want to understand. So we, we actually need a variance to exceed 10 acres because it's 12.83?
Right, that's right.
Okay. And then...
And the density per acre.
Because there's less density in, in the first 350 and more in the back, that requires a variance?
That is one of the requests as well.
Okay.
Yes. So you got them all?
I, I think, okay. Just want to make sure I understand...
No, I appreciate it.
What we're talking about.
Neil, do you have a follow-up?
I had a quick follow-up on the water and the drainage.
Okay, just sit down.
Okay.
I had that feeling.
Yes, so...
I just want to know, we do have our environmental engineering representatives here as well, if you wanted to be aware of that, there in the audience as well.
This has to do with the, the culverts. And, because I drove through the neighborhood, and I noticed a number of them were not cleaned out. Many of them were covered, and of course, that's going to create issues. I know in my own neighborhood, some are covered, and where they're covered, that they have drainage issues. So my question to you is if the culverts were all cleaned out, and the areas that do not have culverts, they actually had culverts there...
Do you believe that, in your opinion, would that improve the drainage in the uh in the neighborhood? Yeah, based on our preliminary look, it would. It would allow it to flow cleaner through the subdivision. The other thing that you'd have to ensure is that essentially, as you know, everything kind of falls pretty much to that south Cedar Brook and then further to the west as well. The, the end culverts at that street where everything's coming down, those would have to be looked at to be sized to accommodate the proper drainage. Because like I said, I haven't done an analysis on them yet, we're just kind of getting into it. But based on a lot of them are twelve inch or maybe down to six, that much flow that's coming down, I just can't foresee that it could handle it, that it's gonna create problems and overflow the road. So they would have to look at upsizing all that as well.
Thank you.
Since you're standing there, you, somebody, maybe it wasn't you, might have been Tim that mentioned the wetlands are not Eagle regulated. What would make it an Eagle regulated? Is it the size of the property, the size of the wetland, soils, what, what?
Yeah, I mean typically it's, it's the proximity to a water course. So they would look at it and verify, you know, does that wetland ultimately overflow and drain down to a natural water course? Um and part of that requirement is we're required not to get a, set up a pre-application meeting with Eagle. And so along with the township and everything, everybody else who attends to make a determination, they actually visually inspect to make sure whether or not.
That was the question. So it's not us saying it's not Eagle required based on your knowledge as an engineer, but it's going to Eagle and saying, here's our case, is it regulated? And they've said it's not.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then um the, the, the open space, just so I understand, you know, when you say there's fifty seven percent open space, the other is, is the forty three percent that's not open, is that the, the homes only? And are you considering everything is open, like driveways, roads, and the only, the forty seven percent are the roofs? Just so I understand where your number came from.
Be all on purpose surface. So it'd be your driveways, your roadways, your, your homes, all of that is in the forty seven, or forty three percent. Fifty seven percent is the green space.
Oh, so the open space, the, the non-open space, the forty three percent, that's the roofs and the driveways and the roads?
Anything that's not green or, or blue for the, the pond, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent presentation.
I think my questions have been answered. Some of it may come up with the water board. We may meet on that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Andrea, could you just bore in for a minute on a term that was used earlier by right? And what the master plan allows for as it currently sits?
Okay, so by right, um it would be, by right under single family residential, a zoning, um the minimum lot size is between eighteen thousand to twenty two thousand square feet. So you took a single lot, um and then the required setbacks would be forty feet, uh sorry, thirty five feet from the rear, forty feet from the front, sixteen feet on both sides. That would be your standard residential layout on any single family residential lot.
Just to be clear, while the master plan, which sometimes can be a little vague, while it talks about other uses that are permitted, residential is a permitted use.
Correct.
And under the R one, the application for the cluster is a permitted application.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then I just, just want to note that the designation within the master plan does indicate that it could be used for institu- institutional civic uses. This designation is intended to be used as place of worship, community buildings and public and private schools that serve the immediate community. So I just want to note that in addition to single family residential use, there are another variety of uses that could potentially be um developed on an R one lot.
Well, I might interrupt and is, is the biggest driver of allowing the cluster unit at the site being that it's on a hundred and fifty foot right away?
Uh, that's definitely one of the criteria that is required um by our ordinance is that the uh many years ago, as I've been told long before my time, um the, the township had an interest in um having these type of condo or more of a cluster housing or site condo is more of a common term that people may be familiar with. Having those be along our major thoroughfares, though, so they added in the requirement that this type of design should be off a right of way width of at least a hundred and fifty feet or more. So that really limits that, that type to along telegraph frozen portions of Woodward.
I just want.
I'm sorry, I had one more.
Go ahead.
And I know I don't want to belabor this great point.
I have something I want, a question I had too, but go ahead.
Great point on the trees, but with respect to the um storm drainage system that you've introduced on the Robertson Brothers site, if you could use this again to talk about the piping, what I've noticed in the plans is that while there is a swale to maintain drainage, you've instituted storm structures.
Yeah, and underground piping as well.
So the storm structures, catch basins, look like they're on a every other, every third, every fourth lot or so uh on both the north and the west.
Correct. Yep, to intercept any drainage running off. And I'll make it clear, anything that.
Drain the swale as well.
Correct, correct.
So you're not directing the water over land, you're, you're, you're taking the water.
Correct.
On that perimeter into, into the pipe.
Exactly, exactly.
One, just one question. On the north and the west side, there's the dent, the trees you're planting. What about, did you, was any discussion of putting a solid, um solid barrier, brick walls, stone walls, anything uh to, to really cordon off that, that so nobody could walk through there, nobody can get through there? You talked about security, et cetera. Was there any discussion about that?
It was a consideration, a couple of things. Because of the grade that, that makes it a little bit difficult, but really the driver to that is that I, I mentioned the DTE poles. Um, really can't put anything, it's, it's like a foot off of the, the property line. So we felt that having the trees create that buffer, but also the visual buffer as well. It'd be higher, obviously, than what a fence would be. Um, so yeah, with that, just because of the um the conflicts with that DTE pole and then the, the grading as well, we thought that the buffer was, the tree buffer was, was more palatable.
If I could add to that as well. The other problem with the fence is over time, people fill things in along fences and grasses grow up and that would block drainage. We see that a lot in older developments where they've put fences in. If it's draining through, it's the drainage that we're talk, trying to capture wouldn't make it through with the wall.
Thanks, thanks. Any other questions?
Not right now.
All right, then now uh we're going to open up for public hearing, we'll open a public hearing. Um, please step, you have, step to the podium, give your name and your address. And please remember, we're going to strictly time it to three minutes. A lot of people here, everybody takes five minutes, we'll be here until Wednesday. So um three minutes, please, name and address.
Evening.
Are you?
James Rose, uh I live on Timber Ridge.
Address?
Hi.
Address?
Uh, six, six, seven, seven. Okay, I use telegraph quite often because I don't like making a left turn off of Maple to get into my street. So I'll take telegraph. And when traffic is light, I can take a right turn to get in on Sandler Wood or Cedar Brook. If it's heavy traffic coming fast behind me, I'll take it down to fourteen mile. Another driveway like that, I think it just adds another dimension of danger. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Chris Gagnon, six, five, two, nine Cathedral Drive. Today I will be sharing my thoughts on the development with regard to the township's code of ordinances. Section eighteen dash one, four, one of the code states, the natural features and character of lands must be preserved wherever possible. The current proposal calls for the leveling of approximately five hundred trees. Not five, not fifty, but five hundred, many of which are mature and contribute greatly to the existing green space. Wiping out these trees and devastating the surrounding wetlands would be nothing short of a travesty and the antithesis of this township environmental mandate. And waiting twenty to thirty years for newly planted trees to reach maturity again is not a reasonable compromise. In section eighteen dash two, two, six, it is stated by the board, and I quote, "The board finds that the township is substantially developed and that property owners in the purchase, improvement and maintenance of their land have relied upon the continuance of the character of the neighborhoods in which their properties are situated." So let's talk about how we define continuance of character. If we built a skyscraper on these lots, I think we could all agree that would violate the character. How about a bunch of circus tents? Probably also a violation. How about leveling thirteen acres of green space and building the most dense and overcrowded detached condo units likes of which this neighborhood and township have never seen? For those in the community who know this neighborhood more intimately than anyone and have relied upon the continuance of the neighborhood character, that would undoubtedly represent neighborhood character assassination. The final code excerpt I wanted to highlight today begins with eighteen dash two, two, nine in relation to lot splitting. Within this section is the definition of lot and parcel, which does cover individual units within a condominium subdivision. I would ask the board to carefully consider if the formed lots meet the minimum requirements for average lot width and average lot area based on neighboring homes. I acknowledge the section may be up for some interpretation, but if this section of code is applicable, then this proposal should have been dead on arrival, similar to when the township rejected GMS Development's proposed split in twenty eighteen, as it was deemed inconsistent with the existing lots in the neighborhood. And even in the event that section of code is not fully applicable, consider the spirit of the code, which is to prevent disproportionately low lot sizes compared to the surrounding area. Also consider that both the board and Robertson have already acknowledged that by regular residential standards, just fourteen single family homes would fit into this space. But somehow we are to believe that thirty eight detached single family condo units are perfectly fine? More than two and a half times regular standards? What is the point in having any zoning ordinance at all if we are allowing something like that to happen? As stated by a board member during the design review meeting, the requested variances turn the proposal into something that is not in the master plan or zoning ordinance. It should also be noted that Robertson created a quote, "parallel plan involving housing clusters" which allegedly would comply with coding without any variances. They did not wish to proceed with that plan because they would not be able to sell those units for as much money. Let me be clear, their profit margins are not our problem to fix.
We're over three minutes now, so.
I, can I have fifteen more seconds?
No, because we have too many people here, really. We can't do this with everybody.
Thank you for your time.
All right, let's continue, please. Well, when we talk, when we total up everybody's comment, wait, when we total up everybody's comments, it'll be longer than what the petitions have, so we'll continue.
Who's got the stopwatch? Um, I agree with Chris wholeheartedly. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah Markowitz, seven, one, eight, one, Glen Grove, directly behind.
Thank you.
This wonderful project. Um, I want to start by saying I agree with Chris and anyone else who's going to come forward with objections. I don't know very much technical, but uh it's the last thing in the world I want behind me. Um, I really, really, really am angry at Robertson. I can't remember exactly who said it, but something about my neighborhood, old people, which I am, but there's a bunch of young people in that subdivision. They're coming in constantly, moving in. Look at the um, excuse me, I'm very nervous. Look at the uh bus stops. There's a great increase in the number of children going to schools. Who is going to say that someone with children is not going to buy that? Plus the fact that they implied that my home, the homes in my subdivision are old and neglected. That is so rude. There is nothing neglected in that subdivision. Um, I think that might be it. Uh, who is going to trust them to meet the um proposed things? Who's going to measure, who's going to prove to me that that's a fourteen foot tree? He's already talking about lowering the uh, the number. Yeah, we'll put up fourteen foot trees. Oh, no, maybe it should just be twelve. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Pete Paul and I live at seven, four, three, one Cathedral Drive. Um, I've been a resident of Birmingham Farms since two thousand and three, where I've, my wife and I have raised our four children. Um, as a resident, I fully support the Robertson Brothers enclave development for a variety of reasons, uh many of which were stated today. There's a shortage of single family ranch homes in Bloomfield. And this development would allow an aging population to stay in the area and in their homes longer. Anyone dealing with aging parents, as I am now, who have just moved their uh parents out of their home, it's actually quite devastating. Um, the average list price for a house in Bloomfield Township is eight hundred and fifty thousand. The enclave is affordable and fits the community with a starting price of under a million dollars, even though that sounds expensive, compared to the Bloomfield Mills development between Franklin and Maple, um which is a starting price of two point seven million. Unlike the HM Signature Collection, which is the developer of Bloomfield Mills and Brookside Village, Robertson Brothers has listened to the concerns of the residents, have changed their plans to mitigate the concerns of our neighborhood, which is adjacent to the proposed development. In up, in the completely opposite direction, Brookside Village Development located um to the west of our subdivision did not engage with the community. They built up their land, causing stormwater to flow back and flood Cathedral, which many people are having flooding issues with. To my knowledge, neither the developer nor the township have addressed this problem. With no obligation to do so, rather Robertson Brothers has offered to uh provide an engineer to investigate the problem in our neighborhood. The opposition to this development, many who don't live in Birmingham Farms will cite destruction of green space, increased runoff, increased noise pollution as their reasons to oppose. Yes, the enclave will have to clear some trees, a lot of boxwoods, a lot of cottonwoods that are actually aren't trees, they're weeds, um invasive species. Robertson has included in their plans planting more trees than they are removing. This will enhance the aesthetic of the area that is currently kept. And if you jog along that line, it's lined with garbage. It is true that Birmingham Farms has a drainage problem on the east side of the neighborhood. However, ninety percent of the development since at a lower elevation than Birmingham Farms, gravity is a wonderful thing. Um, it will cause the enclave to take on our water. They have the plans and the ability to move the water away from our neighborhood into the development's retention prom, uh pond. Yes, construction is noisy and I do empathize with those homes adjacent to the construction. However, this is temporary and I imagine the township has noise ordinances that limit the times during the day construction can take place. I hate to state the obvious, telegraph is busy. It's noisy. I leave three, three blocks west of telegraph and can still hear it. I am not an expert, but cannot imagine that this development will significantly increase the traffic or the noise coming from telegraph. I believe all the variances to the township ordinance should be approved since this development fits our community's aesthetic and fulfills a need much more than another development in close proximity at three times the list price, which has already been approved and is well into its construction phase.
Good timing. Thank you very much.
Hi, Don Elder, seven, one, four, five, Glen Grove. I'm opposing the project uh as, as submitted for several reasons, mainly the master plan. There are so many variances to this master plan, I've lost count. It's our master plan, we should stick with it. We approved it, we decided we wanted to go forward. It, it was our vision for Bloomfield Township. We can always change the master plan going forward, maybe that we rewrite next year or the year after, but we should stick with the master plan. Second, noise from telegraph. On the north, we hear trucks coming down from Maple, which is seventy feet higher, I think is what somebody quoted. And on the south, it raises up a little bit there too. But on the east side of telegraph, between Cedar Brook and fourteen mile, the Bloomfield Glen's apartment complex has a fifteen foot brick wall. Sound just bounces off that. To suggest that we can take out nearly five hundred trees, many of which are over five, a hundred feet tall, and mitigate our noise problems with a five foot berm is a non-starter for us. Drainage, we talked about drainage a little bit. I'm on Glen Grove. So we're, I don't know if you can put up, there's a site cross section there, but um which Tim took us through. Um, I'm on the west side, we have water flowing through our ditches constantly. Uh, it flows over the road during a hard storm. We have sump pumps that run every three and four minutes, three hundred and sixty five days a year. We have a massive drainage problem. Um, to suggest that we're going to pull out five hundred trees and no longer pull the groundwater out with that roof system and get rid of the leaves, that surface water is headed our way. This, this was the schematic, I don't know if you guys can see it, but but this was the site cross section and on the top was Cedar Brook, which is a little higher. I think they're about seven feet higher, um the existing two-story homes. So water would flow back into the, the development. But on the west side, Glen Grove is lower. Uh, this was from their, their schematic that they showed us. So we've got water coming our way. We have enough problems with water. We need solutions, not problems. So finally, um I guess the strategic plan that we approved October twenty twenty four, I believe, said, let's start funding more, more money for green space. This is a perfect time to do it. It's the twenty five to twenty nine calendar year plan. I would love to have more green space. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Uh, good evening. My name is Joe Young, seven, one, nine, zero Cathedral. Uh, I'm currently the co-president of the Birmingham Farms Homeowners Association, along with Christina Stafford here. Uh, we're here to speak in support of the Robertson development. As member of the Birmingham Farms HOA, I'm not here to just express support for Robertson, but also. but also express support for the neighborhood as well. There are some concerns that have been brought forward to Robertson, which we feel they've adequately addressed. Initially, the HOA board did oppose the project. We harbored many of the same reservations you've heard expressed. Living on Cathedral, I backed up to the Brookside Village Development, I had to listen to the last four homes be constructed. So I do empathize with the concerns about construction noise, but at one point, the last nail is hammered in and silence returns. Robertson Homes has continually extended invitations for open dialogue. What followed were substantive conversations where they demonstrated genuine receptiveness to our concerns. Rather than offering superficial concessions, they returned with a comprehensive plan modifications that addressed the fundamental issues, not minor adjustments, significant revisions and considerations that ultimately shifted our board's position from opposition to support. Throughout the months of engagement, we've observed Robertson's consistent commitment to meaningful community partnership. They've invited residents to meetings at their offices, provided thorough responses to resident questions, and when faced with legitimate concerns, they invested the time and resources to redesign substantial portions of the project. They've possessed every legal right to proceed with their original plans, yet they chose collaboration and partnership. Robertson's approach exemplifies how thoughtful development should unfold, through genuine dialogue that produces tangible results. This commission has beforeed a project that serves both economic interests and community values. We respectfully urge your approval for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Christina Stafford, seven-three-five-eight Cathedral Drive. First and foremost, I want to thank the opportunity to bring everyone together and to hold a public forum so that people can come and express their opinions. I am a member of the Birmingham Farms Neighborhood Association and also a resident, obviously. I am here because I just wanted to say first and foremost, I join this board to help make a difference in my neighborhood. I fell in love with the Birmingham Farms neighborhood and have wanted nothing but good things. I'm writing to share my support of the proposed Robertson Homes development. As Joe had mentioned, throughout the planning process, Robertson Homes has shown a willingness to engage constructively with our community. Following a March meeting between adjacent homeowners, Birmingham Farm residents, and the neighborhood board, the board brought forward several concerns to Robertson regarding stormwater management, potential noise, and the impact on neighborhood resources. In response, I felt, and the board had felt, that Robertson made efforts to meet with parties, listen to feedback, and incorporate changes into their design. They've shared detailed plans, like what you've seen today, outlining how stormwater runoff will be redirected away from Birmingham Farms, an area that has experienced ongoing drainage issues. I can say I live on Cathedral, and even over there, I can see water come down Cathedral. Another key point that I think some people were concerned is that the proposed development is not expected to increase traffic through Birmingham Farms. For residents who prioritize safety and maintaining a peaceful environment, this aspect of their plan is reassuring. In addition to addressing concerns, I believe that Robertson has gone above and beyond. Not only are they adjusting their plans, but they have offered to invest in enhancements that would benefit all Birmingham Farms residents, including the beautification of adjacent areas. They are ready to transform an unsecured vacant property into a well-designed residential community that can improve both the appearance and sense of community within Bloomfield Township. Yep. While we recognize that the homes will not be used as direct comparisons for our home values within Birmingham Farms, it's important to note that the development is far more favorable to alternatives such as commercial buildings or multi-unit apartments, which could have more significant impact on property values. Overall, I appreciate Robertson's openness to community feedback and their efforts to work in partnership with us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Emma, seven-four-zero-eight Cathedral Drive. When my mom told me that they were destroying the green area to build houses, I was confused because why? Like, today I saw a bunny and a family of deer in our backyard, and if we build these houses, it's going to destroy their habitats. And these beautiful animals that we have the privilege of having in our backyards, we won't have these animals in our backyards anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danita Banks-Sims, and I'm on six-eight-four-nine White Pine Drive. We've been there thirty-five years, and so I am just, I'm not certain what's going to happen. Conceptually, I have to say that I oppose the development, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness of all the presentations. What I am wondering, though, quite frankly, because I've seen what we have received about the things that would improve the experience for folks who've been there, and I would like to add, I agree, and have witnessed the elevation that people are making in investments in the neighborhood. It is terrific. Birmingham Farms is no sort of diminishing of the property, it's just the opposite, if young families are moving in. My worry is the amount that seems to be allocated for the signage that might be used to coming into the three spaces. Twenty-five thousand seems like, for, maybe for each one of them, it sounds like three that's been allocated, seems way, way low. And what I've noticed over the years is that those signs have, excuse me, look as if they require a lot of maintenance, and so they don't look good after a period of time. If there could be some real investment, maybe in something that looks not unlike the Bloomfield Township signage that's right there at Telegraph and Fourteen that mimics that, so that we can continue to elevate our areas in twenty-five thousand for each of them, it's too low. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Good evening. Address is seventy-one-ninety Cathedral, Deana Young. I'm here to speak in support of the Robertson development proposal. A lot has been said to cloud this issue, but I intend to focus on the facts, which remain straightforward. Robertson has demonstrated genuine commitment to being a responsible neighbor. They worked closely and openly with our HOA board, actively listening to community concerns and implementing meaningful changes to their original plan. This collaboration has resulted in a development proposal that is significantly less disruptive to our neighborhood than initially conceived. Rather than focusing productively on specific elements of the plan, some opposition has unfortunately targeted our HOA board members with unfounded claims. This approach has only diverted attention from the very important planning issues at hand. I hope the opposition, many of whom don't even live in our neighborhood, will put aside the confrontational approach and recognize that productive dialogue, rather than spreading misinformation, is the path forward. Robertson has every legal right to pursue this development, and they've worked collaboratively with our neighborhood to do so in a respectful way. The modifications they've made to their original plan reflect their responsiveness to neighborhood input and their commitment to being good neighbors. My children and many neighborhood children attend school at Temple Bethel. Security is of the utmost importance, and this current development offers us peace of mind that unfortunately Jewish parents need to live safely in our community today. I believe productive dialogue offers the best path forward. I urge the planning commission to consider the facts and genuine efforts both Robertson and our HOA have made to create a development that serves the broader community while respecting the concerns of our existing residents. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Good evening, Joan Dunbar, seven-one-nine-six, Glen Grove Drive. I'm immediately to the west of the proposed development, and I'm very afraid everybody tonight has spoken about stormwater drainage. What I think has been neglected to date is we are sitting on top of an extremely high water table, an aquithous. Nobody to date has yet addressed the impact of such a high-density proposal or project on the water table itself. I can guarantee you, stormwater is not our only problem. I've spoken before about the fact that most of the people on our street are running dual sump pumps, which are constantly running down the drains in our street. This week, Consumers Energy had to do a pipe restoration right in front of our house. It took them twelve hours to do it, and the reason it took them so long to do was because of the drain water and the sump pump water flowing down the street. They had to constantly dig out that trench, to the effect that they had to call in extra loads of stones to shore up the sides of the trench, and they had sump pumps in there to drain the trench. Even though they completed the job, and it's now covered with sand, it looks like I'm sitting on top of a natural spring. So right now, I have a waterfront house. I'm happy, I can sell it. But this is a problem. It's not just the stormwater. It's what impact will thirty-eight new houses have on the water table and the aquithous? Those of us who have lived in the subdivision know this has been an increasing problem as there have been more and more houses built to the west of our subdivision. So I really oppose this until we really know what the impact will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Julie Marks, seven-three-five-seven Cathedral, and I am the vice president of the Birmingham Farms Homeowners Association Board. Over the past several months, our board has had ongoing constructive conversations with Robertson Homes regarding the proposed enclave development. Our co-presidents, Joe Young and Christina Stafford, have had ongoing dialogue with Robertson to address resident concerns, particularly around stormwater management, noise mitigation, and the overall impact on our community. Through these conversations, meaningful improvements have been made to the plan. This includes hiring an engineer consultant to assess stormwater conditions and donating and planting additional trees throughout the neighborhood, all at no cost to our residents. These commitments and continued collaboration demonstrate Robertson's willingness to be a thoughtful and responsible development partner. I want to express my full support to the enclave project and respectfully ask for your approval of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Edgar Bedian. I live at seven-three-four-two East Greenwich Drive. I think I'm against this project. I wouldn't mind if, maybe a few homes or something, but this kind of density, maybe seventy-six cars, you know, two-car garages, thirty-eight homes, traffic on Telegraph is terrible. I mean, we have to get off, out of our sub to take Fourteen Mile. A lot of times, that's so backed up, it's very difficult. I don't know if Robertson's done any traffic investigations about how many accidents happen at Fourteen Mile and Telegraph, probably fatalities per month, I'm sure. Trying to go, if you're, if you want to go southbound on Telegraph, you have to go northbound to make the little turn to come around. That's usually really backed up, especially during rush hour, and I can just imagine how far the cars will be backed up when people are trying to go into their new home if this project takes hold. So I think they, maybe you should look more at what's going to happen with traffic. They've taken care of water, they've taken care of flow, this and that and the other, okay. But nobody's really looked at the traffic, so I think that's where you should go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amon Dillon, seven-one-two-seven Glen Grove. I'm here to really appreciate my people who live in my subdivision who support Robertson's, but I oppose it. Reason, they all talk about that, removing the trees. If anybody of you have a doubt, you can come to my house. I have ongoing problem in my basement with the water. FSM is working on my basement for the last one month, and they could not figure out how to stop the spring water coming from the basement. They put the pipes, that's one thing. And then when you put the pipes, there's another problem, it's called the red ocher, which blocks the pipes. When you put the drainage pipe, I moved into this house in twenty-thirteen, and I put, I had a water in the basement. I put the drainage pipe, so after two years, it started blocking. So it's ongoing problem, and like Mr. Tim said, that they're seven feet below our houses. So removing those trees, your whole water table will be all disturbed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for having this meeting. Frances Martins, seventy-four-seventy-nine Cathedral Drive. So I'm, for clarity, I am a Temple Bethel member, but I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking for myself as a subdivision resident. I've lived in the sub for fifty-one years. As far as I know, my house was built with, by Robertson Brothers. He also lived in the sub, I understand, when I bought the house. They are phenomenal builders. Also, hearing about all this water, I don't have a water problem. My sump pump, I burned it out because I kept on testing it. So don't, don't assume the whole sub has a problem. And if I, if I understand what the presentation was, it looks like there's going to be less of a water problem for my neighbors, because he's built this retention pond, and as he said, the water goes from high to low. And obviously, they're, they're going to, I think it's going to be better for the people that do have a water problem. Last, I want to comment, I think it's very profitable for the township. I really do. You see all the taxes that you're not collecting right now because of the properties, or low, less taxes. And I feel funny saying this, but I've never hear, I've lived in the sub for fifty-one years, I've never seen the divisiveness in this sub, ever. It's like a group of people, a group of residents want, and non-residents also, want to have a green space. And they're not being, I don't think, realistic, and they are not being very nice. So I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that I am one-hundred percent for the project. I think Robertson Brothers is an excellent person to do the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Natalie Hyder. I'm at seven-three-zero-nine Cathedral Drive. Honestly, I am not for or against the proposal. I came to hear more information, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you said that this is happening. Was that like quote, you, somebody's, sorry, somebody, somebody said that this is happening, it sounds like, and that may not be right. But I do, all I'm asking for is that if it is moving forward, that you guys do continue to support the neighbors in the area, and to just try to, the fourteen-foot trees, I think was a great suggestion, and just to move forward. Because I, I truly believe if it's not Robertson Homes, somebody else is going to come in here and build, and we're going to eventually end up doing this all over again, too. So maybe to just get to the point a little bit faster, I do appreciate everything that Robertson Homes has done, to hear the efforts from the HOA and from everyone else that's in this area. And so I do speak to you guys and to everyone else, too. If you have any more views that you would like to see Robertson Homes do, from what I've seen in just this presentation alone, I feel like they are listening and they are hearing us, and that we do try to move forward with it in a constructive manner, rather than trying to create, like the last lady who just came up and said something, a neighborhood civil war here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just remind people that you're addressing this commission, not, not the audience there. Address us.
Good evening, my name's Ralph Nunez. Address is three-oh-six-four-five Woodgate Drive, South Hill, Michigan. I am a landscape architect and urban designer with over forty years of experience and president of my own firm. Within the township, I've been the planner for both the Sunrise Assisted Living units, as well as I've previously worked with Temple Bethel on landscape improvements in the front of their properties. And I have several clients as far as I've worked on their private homes. Currently, I'm working as a volunteer for the temple. I'm not getting paid by them, nor Robertson Brothers, though they would be a great client. Once we received the plans, I was pleased to note that the, it originated by Robertson Brothers and Land Design Studios, both outstanding companies. Ted is one of the best landscape planners and site planners in this area, at least one of two. I was invited to work directly with him. Robinson said, go visit with them and contribute my ideas to enhance the original plan. All my recommendations that I was offered up have been incorporated in the current plan that you're looking at. During the design review meeting, several adjacent neighbor homeowners expressed opposition regarding the plan. They noted issues with the current water, stormwater problems, flooding their front drains within the public right-of-way, and also they're overgrown with vegetation. This is, currently, the drainage is in their front yards, which is basically down because their homes are sitting at the top part. Front of the house is going to the street right away, the back is going nowhere, other than onto the current Robertson property. than onto the current Robertson property. This is basically not a new issue in the township. These homes were built when the engineering design standards allowed for the open ditches, not buried, buried drainage and/or rear yard drains. Water doesn't go uphill, it's coming onto the property. The engineering plans basically are going to solve that problem. There's not, technically by law, you're not allowed to dispose water onto adjacent property. It has to be captured, which the engineers have shown. Secondly, the idea as far as the request of a park, when we looked at the current land use plan and the master plan, which is the future plan, not the new one that's being proposed, there are no provisions for parks in the township. Actually, when you investigate recreation in the township, it consists of five private golf courses, numerous private lakes, and the schools, which are basically non-accessible to the public. There are no parks in Bloomfield Township. As far as we are, we, the proposed housing will benefit the township, as well as with one quality, single-family homes, existing landscaping, and open space, and taxable.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Viraj Dillon, 7127 Glen Grove Drive. If the plan of the enclave goes into plan, then the habitats of animals will be gone. The food chain perished. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Bruce Siegel. I'm at 7456 Cathedral. I've lived in Birmingham Farms for over thirty-five years. I'm a past president of the Homeowners Association. I think our Homeowners Association has done a great job dealing with Robertson Homes, but they don't speak for everybody in the subdivision. I think that a development would be a good idea, although hearing the two kids talk about wildlife, that raises a concern for me that I hadn't thought about. But my concern is the density of this project, and from the very first slide that was shown, comparing these thirty-eight homes to the other homes in the subdivision, it's really clear that the changing the side setbacks and the front setbacks are going to create a real density issue that is going to affect all types of provisions that are given in terms of water, police, fire, schools, traffic. Everybody has spoken to these things already, so I'm not going to get into them anymore, but I do want to make a point that I'm an empty nester. People who live next to me used to be empty nesters till they passed away. People who lived next to them were empty nesters till they passed away. Tons of us empty nesters live in Birmingham Farms. We don't need thirty-eight homes. Cut the number in half, and I think it would be a great development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jasmit Sidhu. I live on 7127 Glen Grove. Most of the people who are talking about today, they don't live on the site. I live on the corner of that house. I know what the water level is. I oppose this Robertson's, because I'm not agreeing, because we will have more problems with the water. We already dealing with the water issues at the moment. So township should, should look into those issues before give them any approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I read the statement at the Board of Trustees.
Name and address.
I'm, I'm getting there. Sorry, it's in here. I read the statement at the Board of Trustees meeting on June twenty-third, but I'm here tonight to reaffirm it. My name is Olivia Steele, and I live at 6998 Santa Will Drive with my fiance. We're directly across in the proposed Robertson condo development. I echo the heartfelt concerns already shared and want to speak not just as a resident, but as someone who came back here to build a future. We chose this neighborhood to start a family, to give our kids the kind of childhood we had growing up in this very area. That dream is now at risk. The demolition of our green space isn't just about aesthetics. It means more noise, more air pollution, and the loss of a natural barrier from Telegraph Road. With three years of unbearable construction, noise, dust, and disruption right outside our front door is not something families should have to endure. After connecting with a well-established Realtor in this area, it is their professional opinion that this proposed development will devalue the property value of the surrounding homes, as this will become a thirteen-acre wasteland during that time. The added density will overwhelm our infrastructure, strain our aging underground water systems, and stretch local resources thin. These proposed high-density condos simply do not reflect the character or values of Bloomfield neighborhoods. This isn't smart or sustainable growth, it's a step in the wrong direction. What our community actually needs isn't another development, but more shared space. Bloomfield Township has few public parks, and this is our chance to change that. Let's invest in something that brings people together, not pushes them out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Weiner. I live at 4339 Spruce Hill Lane in the township. I'm directly west of the Birmingham Farms subdivision. We walk through there every day with our dog, so I'm familiar with the subdivision. I'm really here on behalf of Temple Bethel, I'm past president of the temple, and I would like to speak specifically about one issue, which is security. We have a major security issue, particularly since October seventh. Our community is under attack. We are very concerned about having a basically blank slate immediately north of us that's wooded and unprotected. We're, we're protected on the, primarily on the east and on the west and on the south, but not on the north. We've held onto this property for many years, and we thought that Robertson Brothers' proposal was worthy of consideration. They've worked very closely with us and Ralph and the community, and we're very much in support of it. I would also point out that we think that the quality of these houses and the price point would be very appealing to our congregants, who would like to live there and be able to walk to Temple, which is a nice benefit. And essentially, we'd like you to very much consider the security issue, because that's tantamount to us in terms of the circumstances we face today in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will be brief. I've already been introduced. Jim Clark, 2731 West Hickory Grove Road. I've been in the development business for thirty-five years now. I've never been able to speak at a public meeting as a resident, so I'm a forty-five-year resident of Bloomfield Township, and I didn't move here forty-five years ago because of the parks, and you've done nothing to change my opinion of the parks in Bloomfield. There aren't any. I do know that I'm looking for a home. I want to, I want to stay in my community, and this is the type of development as a resident of Bloomfield Township. It's not for everyone, but this is a type of housing that is up and down Telegraph, and it is, in our belief, not an inappropriate use of a site on Telegraph with detached, high-quality housing with the developer who's been doing business in this township for forty-five, well, fifty years. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophie, 7408 Cathedral, and I did not, I have recently moved here. I did not grow up here, and I used to live in Novi, and in there, we had many public parks. We had lots of places where children could come together, play, and we had many events there as a community. And I'm not against leaving it as a green space, but I am against is creating, creating a housing, a place of housing and a neighborhood where we could be preserving wildlife that, again, has multiple trees and multiple generations of wildlife that are helping with issues like global warming, because we have so much space that is already used for businesses, housing, businesses, housing, temples, which is all okay, but at the same time, we need to think about the future and how we're going to do this, because if we continue to keep building neighborhoods, places of worship, and businesses, we won't have any more space, and that will negatively impact us in the future. And the amount of trees that they're planting in these houses is not equate to the five-hundred trees lost with that green space, and what should be built with this property instead is a public park, like, again, communities can foster, come together, children can play, because we don't have a lot of this. And I, as an incoming freshman, would like a place where I could come with my friends, we could hang out together, because while they say that in there, there is a park, other residents from other, other neighborhoods will not be using those, because it will be seen as, as a place of park for the people that live there. So it would only be accessible to the people that live in there, not people that live outside, and the only place we really have is a little spot in the temple, and even then, that's private property. If we make this public and, and other people can use that, it generally creates more, an environment with more community and fosters more, and fosters better relationships. That's it. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Stuart Harmon, 7094 Cathedral Drive. I'm opposed to development as it stands. A lot of folks have talked about some of the specifics, and I basically endorse that, but I also think the township has a moral obligation to their existing residents and taxpayers to preserve the character of our neighborhood, and stuffing something like this and doesn't do that. So my, my suggestion is, you know, cut the density, take some units out, increase the setbacks, add another row of trees, like was suggested, just, just make it reflect the surrounding area a little bit more. It'll take all the divisiveness out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Marcy Dushner. I live at 6924 Cedar Brook, and I will say, our voices have not been heard. I live in the sub, I will be affected by this development. We have repeatedly brought up concerns with density, drainage, change of character. We, we've only been able to get trees. We're thankful we got the berm added in, that was nice to see, but I'm respectfully calling on all of you to reject this proposal for the following reasons. The first and foremost is too dense, too many condos for such a small space. We would ask that they reduce the number of homes, which we've repeatedly asked every time we've met with our HOA and Robertson. As a current homeowner, I reject nearly three condos per current lot. That's not in line with any other properties or developments in Bloomfield Township. There are no mature trees in this proposal. It's clear-cutting. It creates noise and drainage issues for the residents, particularly Glen Grove. It's not inclusive to our current neighborhood. It's a gated community. It's green space we can look at, but we can't access. Our Booth School community, that green space was already given to a more affluent area, and there's nothing left for the residents of our sub. Sadly, that's why we're all here. This is the last green space in our sub. There's now a berm, which I already mentioned, but we would respectfully request a higher berm, more like the more affluent areas farther north, as the noise level is incredibly unbearable, even with the mature trees there already. We already have a senior development quite close, across the street, right on Telegraph, Sunrise Assisted Living. We need to focus on the needs of young families in our area. Those folks are underserved. There's too much traffic and congestion, that's already been said. It's hard to run, bike, walk your dogs. It'll be good luck to everyone trying to get in and out of that community on Telegraph. It's a nightmare. And lastly, Glen Grove is set much lower than Cedar Brook, and there are known aquifer, there's known water issues. We should have been here earlier, coming to you with these problems, and they, they need to be addressed. They need to be addressed. And please also note, Robertson Homes was defeated in West Bloomfield at the corners near Walnut Lake. It's now a Kaldian Community Center, and respectfully submitted, Marcy Dushner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's my wife. I don't know, I'm going to follow that, but I'm going to try. Mark Dushner, 6924 Cedar Brook, Bloomfield Township. Again, one of, something, I'm going to repeat a lot of the same, just to reiterate. This development goes against the master plan. What's the point of us having a master plan? I know we're going to rewrite it in two thousand and six, but right now, the master plan is the master plan that we have right now, and I know you can do variances and stuff, but if we're going to keep doing variances, what's the point? It's just whoever throws the most money on it gets the most variances. You go to the end of my street right now, you look left, you got Sunrise Assisted Living, you got another cluster living of the apartment complex. Now, if this happens, you look right, you're going to have a thirty-eight, thirty-eight detached condo, apart, you know, condo complex, senior living, pretty much, or possibly, maybe not, but another cluster living area right at the end, three clusterings just at the end of my subdivision. And you don't do this, you know, in other areas. This is happening in our neighborhood. At the Booth School, you guys did a land swap with, was supposed to be developed by the nature center, but developed it behind there, and I know they have a retention pond there, but now because of that retention pond and other poor drainage areas, parts, house, certain houses on Cathedral have like permanent sod in their area. It's, you can actually see water coming down the sidewalk, it is constantly draining. Again, the other area you want to develop has underground aquifers that goes through the end of our subdivision. I live in the top-left corner there. I have a double lot. I can't even build on this second lot, because there's an underground aquifer there, as I've been told. People over on Glen Grove not have one, but two sump pumps. There's cactails growing in their ditches, and that's not because their culverts aren't cleaned out, it's because there's constant water flowing. Also, on the top of this, we started petition a while ago. Two weeks ago, we had about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-seven signatures. We're up to three hundred and four signatures now of people, residents and people that live in our neighborhood against this, and all those people are voters. And I know you guys are disappointed, but people that actually here, that are, that voted in, we're going to remember who is with us and who is against us. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
I'll get there eventually. Ken Elder, I live in Heddington, the east end of Bloomfield Township. The question I have is, we have an old master plan and a new master plan. This meets neither of them. Old master plan, it clearly has a lot, needs a lot of variance. New master plan hasn't been written. Kick the can down the road, two years. Why, why slam this through on the, on the old master plan that nobody pays attention to? Wait two years. Robertson Brothers will be here in two years. It's a very viable option at this stage. That's all I got.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Brody. I live at 3807 Wabique Lake Drive West. I am the Riparian representative for the township with respect to the Wabique Lake Lake Board. I am over seventy years old. I live in a multi-story house. The stairs are getting very difficult for us to climb. This kind of product is something right up my alley with respect to staying in Bloomfield Township as a Bloomfield Township resident. All of my children that are in the area are within a five-mile vicinity of my current residence. They will be within a five-mile vicinity of this residence if I move into it. I currently participate in a country club that is in Bloomfield Township. That, too, is within my area of, of my area of living within the township. I like the amenities within the township. I benefit from the amenities within the township. This is something that, in terms of me, will keep me in the township to the extent that it is built. To the extent that it is not built here, then I ultimately have to go through the, I guess, additional driving and whatever to get to wherever I, wherever I move to, but this will be the central location for me. It works for me. It's very good. In terms of it being a single-family, family ranch, single-story ranch, that is what's needed. My wife and I have looked at potentially moving to a single-story ranch or a retirement community such as Sunrise. Sunrise doesn't work for people that don't want to be in a community such as that and still want to live and age in place in their own residence. My mother was a Bloomfield Township resident. She aged in place in her home. She could no longer walk the stairs, and so in that regard, to the extent that the demographic is basically getting up to the sixty and above, this is something needed and would be desired by people of my, in my, my demographic and my age. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deja, 7408 Cathedral Drive. I have to admit, admit that I hadn't even thought of the drainage problem and all that when I first heard of the development. I've just moved to the neighborhood. I bought a house last December. It took us a few months to renovate it. We finally moved in to the neighborhood. I have spent two years sending postcards to the, some people may have received my postcard, because I really wanted to live in this neighborhood. One of the reasons I wanted to move to, into Bloomfield, we live in Novi, we have a lot of parks, great schools, but the, the amount of green space we have here, the sizes of the lots, I'm a Realtor, this is what people want here, too. So I understand there's a deficit in older people home, but it doesn't guarantee that these, this, this complex is going to be bought only by a these, this, this complex is going to be bought only by above 55-plus, 55-plus people. I was really taken aback when I, when I found out that they were going to just tear all the woods down. I think, I'm not here because of my, myself, I'm here because of my children and the next generations. We need more green space, we don't need anything to go down and more roads and houses to be built in green areas like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Larry Hoffman, 6872 Cedar Brook Drive. I'm a former president of the Birmingham Farms Homeowners Association, and there's been lots of things said. I'm sure Robertson is great, this isn't about how great they are, how great Tad is, who's a personal friend, so I know he's great. But this is about the density, the amount of ordinance, yeah, variations that we need to have and, and variances. And this is all to jam it in. This is 10 into a five-pound bag, and that's never good. And I find it very disingenuous, as a person whose kids grew up at Temple Bethel, they've left that land sitting there for 30 years, unmaintained, perfectly unsecure. There's gonna be five years of construction going on. That will be, good luck with security. We have been nothing but great neighbors and secure with the synagogue. They did nothing with that land, and it's a little disingenuous now to call security as their big concern. This is all about the money, this is all about jamming it in so they can make their money. That's what this is about, and I find it very, very disconcerting that the water problems are our fault. It's Birmingham Farms' fault, because they didn't clear out the ditches or anything like that. This is about the underground water, this isn't about storm drainage. Water runs constantly in our neighborhood. And I don't, I don't have sumps, I live up off of, on the hillside, but I know people, they run constantly. And if you don't think these sumps are gonna run constantly, that's not storm water, that's just regular water, everyday water, coming out of the ground. So I am opposed to this, and I think, I don't know if it's possible, but I think there needs to be transparency into what the homeowners association board members have done and gotten in writing from Robertson, Temple Bethel, also, to make this deal happen, because there has been zero transparency with, as part of a community board meeting. Nothing's been shared community-wide, it's only been by word of mouth. So the only divisiveness is being caused by the homeowners association board members, not the residents.
All right, I don't see anybody else marching to the podium. I do see somebody else marching to the podium. Okay.
Three minutes, I'm being told three minutes, are we?
Hi. Effie Steele, 1387 Club Drive. I'm also a Riparian for Forest Lake. All current complexes that were shown up there earlier as clusters are actually the exact, bad examples of why this should happen. And they're also part of the reason we have a new strategic plan. It mandates protect the green space, water bodies, health and safety of our citizens. This development in its current plan does not meet these requirements. Removing 13 acres of green space without caliper equivalent is not okay. 10-to-12-foot arboviti does not replace 100-foot trees. This is a health hazard for the citizens who will have no protection from heavy metal pollution, from a six-lane highway for at least three years, and then only partially. Paying into the tree fund also does not protect these citizens. Offering to embellish crumbling brickwork and signs cannot buy healthy lungs. The subdivision deserves a legitimate, much enlarged green buffer and less density from the present plan. That would be 14 homes. To make it financially viable for Robertson Brothers, I understand they're a business. We recommend that the good members of Temple Bethel, who are concerned about security and are targeting this gated community to its seniors, give up part of their current parking lot, so that 39 units can wrap around the south of the wetland pond. They have plenty of land to supplement their parking lot to the south and west. There should be shared compromise by the congregation, which mostly does not reside in the subdivision, with the current residents who would be treated as second-class citizens from the proposed gated community. P.S., Jeff Sands. I am quoting you from the master plan vision statement, 2007. Bloomfield Township will remain a premier residential community, offering its citizens pristine water features and woodlands, exceptional educational opportunities, exemplary municipal services, and vibrant diverse upscale business community. And Bloomfield Township will remain Michigan's most desirable community in which to leave, to live. That was you. Please review chapter 18-229-6 and 18-141. There's a lot more, but I don't have time. I do have a proxy from one Realtor, because we were only given one week. His name is Evan Partridge, and I will read his public comment, if I can.
Thank you.
For, for Mr. Partridge?
No.
No proxy?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Ban Sadekizzi. I live on 4122 Pomona Colony. It's in Foxcroft neighborhood, it's across the street from Birmingham Farms. I, we lived in Birmingham Farms for a few months while we were renting. I don't, I have many friends that live in Birmingham Farms, so I really care about the neighborhood too. Our HOA, I'm part of the HOA at Foxcroft, and I care very much about our neighborhood and all the neighboring neighborhoods. I've lived in Bloomfield Township most of my life, and I love the township, I love the city. I just wish that we would have more green space, parks, and less, new builds. I raised my children at the, at the playground that we have at Foxcroft, we loved it. We have so many families that come outside of Foxcroft and use our park area. It's needed. I think it would be a great compromise, maybe, to put a park area, to use some of that green space at Birmingham Farms, and build maybe less houses than that many. I think that would be a great compromise for the township to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is George Blady. I live at 7455 Glen Grove Drive. So I've absorbed the litany of responses this evening, and the one dynamic that keeps permeating through my thought processes, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. My experience as a project manager within my working tenure, and working on pursuits that are very, very layered and complicated, whenever you take on anything of this magnitude, you have to be mindful of two things, intended consequences and unintended consequences. And it's the latter that should really captivate your attention. So I only wanna serve as a, provide a bit of a cautionary tale. The gentleman from Robertson, it's clearly evident, these are learned guys, okay? They've done their homework, they're very devout in their craft, and that's to be respected. I just think there needs to be some added exploration as to what this entire pursuit is going to reveal. You need to understand it in a very granular fashion, okay? And whatever is derived after such an effort, you gotta make sure that it's airtight. So that's my contribution to this discussion. I'm not opposed to it, I'm not advocating it. But I do think we need to tread cautiously when you look at something to this extent with the many pieces involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right, I don't see anybody running up here, I'm gonna close, close the public hearing. So that's, that's the last of the comments, bring it back to the commission, and open it up for comments, discussion, or a motion. But discussion first, I suppose. Anybody?
I have a question for the engineer, actually.
Go ahead.
First of all, do you know if the developers plan to put basements in?
Yeah, they are intending on putting basements. But something that we do differently than was done, there's a lot more research done ahead of time by developers nowadays. So they'll do soil borings, look at water.
I've heard a few people, more than a few people, talk about the water table.
Yes.
So this is strictly from an engineering point of view, nothing, again, no this side or that side. If you put 38 holes in the ground, eight to 10-foot deep, whatever, I presume you're gonna have a sophisticated drain tower system, and then the water that goes into the drain tower system goes into a pump, and in this case, it'll be pumped into these pipes that you're creating, because they're not just gonna be pumped on grade. Well, maybe you, you should tell me.
Yeah, no, I.
Will they be pumped on grade, or will they be pumped into a storm lead?
They will be pumped into enclosed storm drain. So, yeah, that makes a big difference.
So, again, I told you I'm not an engineer, and I'm still not. So, would that have any impact whatsoever on the ground table level by having 38 holes?
Yeah, essentially what we tend to find is that, especially during the seasonal time, by having the new type of drainage systems they have with enclosed drains around the perimeter of the footings, and in addition to that, they usually typically, Robertson Brothers, if they know there is a higher water table, typically you'll, we put underdrains around all the drainage structures as well. So it'll, what that does is, over time, that allows that water to keep infiltrating into the storm system, instead of just draining over land overflow. So what essentially we find is, and I'm not a geotech engineer, but it essentially lowers those water tables down to a more manageable level.
It may or may not, but there's no way it could increase?
No, it's not gonna go up. It's going, yes, it will not. It's not adding water to it, you're removing more, and it's getting discharged below ground, filtering through a drainage system to a pond. It's, because what happens a lot of times in, with the ditches and everything, it, it just recirculates. It pumps up onto the ground, which they don't do in any sub, and then it just leaches back in the ground, and then it gets back in the drain tower, get pumped back up, so you get that cyclical water reoccurring all the time. But by having a drainage system, it takes it, gets rid of it, discharges it off-site regularly.
And then when you sized your, to coin a bill that was just passed, your big beautiful pond, did you, do you account for water that might come from the ground into the sump? Or is there no way to really calculate that?
Part of the equations that are derived do account for that somewhat, but it, it's a very difficult thing to really know the amount of flow underneath there. But typically, like with a water table, it's always gonna be there, and it's usually delayed. So a lot of times, that water gets pumped up out of the system and outletted, as that water's starting to build up, and then, even in dry conditions, I'm sure they can attest to, you're, there's still, the sump pumps are still running. So when there's no storm drainage, there's no rain getting into that storm system, it's constantly de-watering that water at all times. So that's not accounted for, but that's a benefit, is my point.
Okay, thank you.
I just jump on that for a minute. I think the question really would be, are the 38 holes, or the impervious surface, are they gonna provide a surcharge?
Answer the question.
To the surrounding area?
Yep, no.
And, and you say no, why?
Well, because what you have is a detention pond that handles that surcharge. That's the point of the pond, is to stop that surcharge from hitting that storm collection system. So it'll go into there, and it's held for a 30.
I'm gonna talk about an event.
Okay.
I'm talking about the displacement of the soil because of the homes, new 38 homes, and the impervious surface. Is that gonna provide any surcharge to the water table to the surrounding area?
No, because you have an underground drainage system that's constantly bleeding that water down at all times. And so what's happening is it's getting pumped, as you see occur with a house that has a high groundwater table, but that pump is getting rid of the water, it's not just staying on site. So to your point, if you didn't have that, if you didn't have a means for that water to leave, then yes, is, when you put that, that water's gonna move around, right? You've put in the concrete structure. But by putting in a drainage system, it's getting rid of that to not allow that just to disperse. It's going to get pumped out and drained out. And like I said, the, around the perimeter and throughout the site, the regular storm sewer system is gonna be deep, and it's gonna have a de-watering system in itself. Not pumped, but it'll be, say, four to six feet below the ground, and so it'll be, every single day, every single minute, water will be bleeding in and keeping that water table lower.
Do you already have that planned, or is that something?
Oh yeah, we, we do it on all, all these. We, unfortunately, a lot of the developments in the land that's available nowadays are sites that are a little more complicated. So we work with geotech engineers and things like that to kind of ensure that we don't have the water issues that other residents have.
Do you have a geotech report that you've assembled?
Yeah.
Does it show you anything that you'd like to tell us about?
Yeah, so we.
I didn't see it in the back.
Sure, we do, we have a full geotech report, and we also went out and we did test pits, which is something we, we normally do on a site when we wanna understand what the aquifer is. So we did that, certainly recognized there was a high water table, there's, there certainly is. It's not on the entire property, by the way, it's on portions of it. I don't know the portions off the top of my head, but it's not the entire property. This is not, by far, not the worst site we've ever dealt with. We've done a lot of projects, we've done a lot of projects with, you know, a high water table, and we're able to work through that. Brad kinda mentioned it, when you put utilities in, it does tend to drop it down a little bit, but because of the, the sump pumps, I have no, I have no, I'm sure that those sump pumps are going to, to run, and we'll make sure that they're, they're consistent. But again, it's not the entire site, and we dealt with much worse than this. So we have the track record, and we're not concerned.
Anybody else, comments, questions from the commission?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I've been on the board for 20, going on 23 years, the Board of Trustees, and on this commission about 20 years. So we've been through these fill-in developments over the years, whether it's Barron Estates, the other Hickory Grove project, which you were very kind when you said there were opinions on it. It was a lot more than opinions. Legacy Hills, Meadowbrook, the project at Booth was mentioned, the current one on Franklin Road, and the other one that, Long Lake and Lazar, and these don't cover them all. And all of them, all of them, the surrounding neighbors were not happy about these developments. There was a lot of opinions, as you stated, but a lot of pushback, a lot of angry neighbors, a lot of legitimate concerns, but a lot of, a lot of things that not based in fact either. So, you know, and it goes both ways. So, and at the end of the day, all of these projects were very successful, and by successful, I mean, they listened to the surrounding neighbors, and the concerns of the neighbors after these projects were developed, very rarely do you hear about anything other than they're happy that these projects were developed. And in fact, they did not reduce the, the value of the property, if anything. All of these projects by themselves were sold for more than expected, and the surrounding neighborhoods all went up in value. Not one went down in value. And I can tell you, because I'm the only one in this township who's been here through all of these projects. And the other thing too, is not to say that this project will, it's not a, it's not an exact slam dunk that this project's going to be, is going to be approved, if it even goes to the board, although somebody's had that interpretation, that's not how this works. And as Andrea so eloquently stated at the Design Review Board, and at our last Board of Trustees, went through all of the steps, all of the reviews that this project has to go through. So even if we say we want this to go to the, to the ZBA, to the board, to all of the other boards for review, it doesn't mean anybody's going to approve them. All we're saying is, if it is approved. All we're saying is if it is approved, these are the conditions we want to have it met at. These are the conditions that have to be approved. So with all that said, I mean, I just, I hear the concerns. I mean, I have some of the same concerns about drainage, but I think you've addressed those to the Board. And this could be cluster housing if they wanted to go that direction. And you'd still get the same number of properties in there and they wouldn't need all these variances either. As far as the green space issue, that's a concern. That's a concern for people in the township. That's a concern for people on this planning commission. It's a concern for people, department heads. And it's a concern for the Board of Trustees. And that is something that will be addressed and we're looking into. But in all frankness, this is not the property for green space. It's on Telegraph Road. But we are looking at other green spaces that are conductive and useful, where everybody in the township can enjoy them. It's not on a major highway, probably the bit, one of the busiest highways in Michigan. So, you know, that's, talk about environmental hazard. That's just not a good, good mix over there. Now, unless anybody else has something.
Yeah, yeah. Defer to Jeff.
Well, I'm, I've looked at this, I always look at these projects, any project. I look at the property owner's rights and I look at, at the people who, who those rights will affect, the rights of the, of the homeowners and residents. And when I look at this project, for the one part of it, somebody's gonna build on this site. Somebody, someplace is gonna build here. Is this a better, you think this is a good one? I don't know. I'm not answering that. But what I don't like on the, on that side of it is that the density, which is supposed to be more dense, Telegraph Road less dense toward the property lines. Wait, no, please. It was there, that's there for a reason. That's to give a better buffer to the, to the property owners, residences on those areas. And now all of a sudden, we're gonna say, we want a variance, say, let's get rid of that. Okay, well, that's their right to do. That's their right to do, whether they get it or not, that's another thing. On the other hand, someone's gonna build here. This is a, this is a nice project. So what do you think? What do you do? Do you, do you look at one thing or do you look at it as a whole? Personally, I look at that density issue very, very strongly. Drainage, you can say all you want about drainage. I live in an area where, where builders build, we're building new houses and the water table is very high and water's all over the place. And it's not, it, it's very difficult to control. I get what your engineers have said, that's great. But on overall, I have to say, I think this, this is too dense for this pro, this property. It's, although it's your right to come forward with a project because it's your property and maybe the other part that you wanna purchase from Bethel. But I just think it's, I think it's too dense. So overall, I would be opposed to the project.
No, no. I agree. No, I agree, but you don't need the clapping. No, 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 not at all. All right, anybody else? Well, then I guess.
Well, I, I have a comment. I already wrote it down before we ever said it, but I have serious concerns about the density, about the questions that were raised about drainage, about the number of variances that are probably gonna be required for such a project. And the effect to the neighbors is a sensitive question because I, I lived through it personally with, with my residence in the previous development here in the township that others would claim today to be a five-star development at Turtle Lake. So at any rate, we have a credible developer and, and notable projects that they have accomplished before. This is not their first time at bat. But I have serious questions and serious concerns yet that maybe there can be some adjustment made, some more schematic, if you will, redesigned. It would maybe calm the neighbors and the questions that have been posed tonight. So my, my sympathy right now is to vote negative for, for this project the way it's been presented tonight. Too many questions for me.
I think it's important to share perspective as a township resident, but also as a builder. I think the thoughtfulness that's gone on in putting this presentation together and putting this development together is at a level that's generally unseen. There's been several years of contemplation. There's been a lot of engineering analysis. There's been a lot of thoughtfulness that's gone into this. And that's rare indeed. I think it's unfair to say, what you might have, you should settle for what you've got. I think that's a garbage proposition. I think you measure it on the merits that's been presented. I think it's a, a great product personally for my community. I live half a mile away. I think that the by right vernacular that we use in the development world is something that the public doesn't understand. There's a property right to develop that property. And while you've enjoyed it as a green space, it's not the neighborhood's property. And I think the current owner has the right to explore options for whatever reason they are. I think the density issue is the sensitive issue. I think the water has been addressed. I think the green space and the perimeter buffer can be addressed. I think the notation you made about the height of the plants is exceptional. I think the burn should be increased. I think there's some of those nuances that should go on. And by the way, we've said it a couple of times, there are many hurdles that they'll, that this, this plan will have to go through, engineering being one of them. I'm talking about the township's engineering department. My opinion on the density is that the product development, the product offering, and the end use of the property for the intended recipient is acceptable. And so I'm in favor of this development.
Any others?
I have a question for the developer. Do you own this property now?
We're under contract with two different owners, one of them being Temple Bethel.
But it's all predicated on this going through?
It is. When we purchased land, it's contingent on getting approvals.
And I guess the other statement I'd make, and it's probably not gonna be one that people wanna hear, I don't understand, I, I understand the residents, I obviously live in the township and I understand the residents want green space. But that doesn't mean because there's green space being developed that it needs to stay green space because you'd have to buy that property for it to become a park. And I don't know that anybody has that kinda money to invest. The township's not gonna do that. So Temple Bethel owns the property, I'm assuming, and they have the right to sell it to somebody who's gonna do something with it, whether or not there's density issue or what have you, that's, you know, up in the air at this point. But there may be, there may be a number that this developer has to have in order for it to be worthwhile for them to do this. I don't know that. So I'm, I'm kind of up in the air about that. But I, I appreciate all the signs that are up there and, and I have, my children are older now, but I have eight grandchildren. And I, I, I understand the animal thing and all that stuff. I don't disagree with that. But again, the township is not gonna buy that property for you to have green space. So unless all you people who are holding the signs got millions of dollars to invest to buy that property to give it to your children, then that's not gonna happen.
Oakland County can buy it.
Okay.
No, 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 no comments. We're done with that.
We're done.
I wanna address that, what you just said. I, as I said, you have to look at the property, the rights of the property owner, which is going to be Robertson, now Bethel, whoever, however that works out. And they have a right to develop it. And as I said, you can't, I can't sit here and tell everybody, you should, yeah, you should keep it green space unless you wanna buy it.
Right.
However, however, it's our duty to see that what is built there, what is built there is not damaging to the community or, or is helpful to the community, or is it not? That's our job. Not to say they can't build, because they're gonna build. Somebody's gonna build there. So my opinion is that we need to, this is not the end-all. I think it's too dense. That's my opinion, one vote, just one vote. And, but they have, but somebody has, they have a right to build. That's all, because they own the property. But that's how, I just wanna clarify what I said.
The rights to the property, they don't own it yet.
Well, that's what I meant, yeah, that, I know, I get it.
It's just the way it goes.
All right.
A question.
Yeah, but I don't wanna call, I wanna call for a vote, so let's move on.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, you need to make a motion first.
I'm ready to make a motion in a moment. Yeah, I also, when I first saw this months ago, my first response was, it's too dense. Thirty-eight is too dense. And I had concerns about that. I would prefer to see it fewer, no question about it. But I also am not, am not so naive to think that the developer, if he wanted to, cannot make this cluster homes because he's allowed to do that. If that's what they wanna do and just make it very, talk about density, put it all together right on top of each other, attached to each other, they can do it. And I don't wanna see that because I don't like the way that looks either. So I think this is a better plan, a better project. I don't think it's harmful. And I think in the long run, it's a good use of the property. Yeah, I don't wanna see an office building there. I don't wanna see apartments building there. You look at the apartments to the north of this development, talk about an eyesore. Now that's an eyesore. This will not be an eyesore. This will be developed, it will be very, based on what Robertson has done to their other projects in Bloomfield Township and surrounding areas. I have no doubt it will be a first-class project. And with that said, I'm gonna make a motion that we make a positive.
Recommendation? Recommendation?
Yeah, thank you. Positive recommendation to the township board based on the following considerations. Not one, granting all the necessary requests by the zoning board of appeals. Two, approval by the wetlands board. Three, compliance with the requirements of the township departments, including approval by engineering, environmental services prior to the township board. And compliance with the requirements of the township's landscape architect. And I am gonna state in that consideration with fourteen-foot trees. It's, it has to happen. There's, there's a way to get them, believe me. And also, I want the burn to be at least a minimum of whatever Bloomfield Chase has at their project. Also, compliance with the requirements of the township's traffic consultant, review and approval for signage, walls, and gate by the design review board, and, and payment to the township wet, woodland trust fund for deficient tree replacement. But hopefully, this will be very nominal if, based on the fact that they'll have fourteen-foot trees and make it more dense because it should meet, very close to meeting your requirements. So that's the, that's the motion.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion moved and seconded before we call for a vote. Just so you know, we have six members here. We need four votes in order to, to pass this, okay? So I, everybody understands that? You all understand we need four?
Roll call vote?
Yep.
Okay, well, let me call for a vote. Well, you want me to write around one or the other?
Let's do roll call.
I'll do roll call, I'll call out names. That's, okay?
Sure.
Kelly?
Yes.
Selick?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Salz?
No.
Atto?
Yes.
Patanga?
No.
Uh, vote passes to forty-two.
Forty-two, vote passes, okay. Thank you all for coming. I think what you might.
We have one more.
I know, we have one more thing on the, I know that. So you may wanna stick around for that. But, but again, thank you for all your comments. All right, the next item.
Do you wanna call a five-minute recess or something?
Yeah.
Go to the bathroom or something? Just to get him.
Till they can leave.
Well, I ain't going to the bathroom, right?
All right, we're gonna call a, a five-minute recess and we'll be right back. We have one more item on the agenda. Folks, if you'll please.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna make a presentation on the next item. Okay, so the next item is a, is this is an introduction to a site plan and lot split for Temple Bethel. Temple Bethel is located at seventy-four hundred Telegraph, as we're all familiar with. They are seeking approval to subdivide the existing property to create a new single-family residential development named The Enclave. The applicant for the enclave development is seeking to develop the twelve-point-three acres, which we've discussed. I do wanna note that as part of this request, they are asking for, the applicant has provided a survey shows the division of seventy-four hundred Telegraph into two lots with access from West Fourteen Mile Road for the newly created southern parcel. So they are seeking to combine a portion of their property to the future or potential development for the enclave. I do wanna note that this lot, lot split does not require, does not require them or will not result in the loss of any parking. The only use that is in the area right now that's proposed to be split off is actually, there's some existing sports courts and tennis nets, basketball nets that are there currently. So we.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Can you show the graphic, please?
Here?
Of the split.
Oh, I must not have it on this. The split, so I'm sorry, I, I should've had the, I don't have the original. The split's gonna occur, let me look, go back to the aerial. So the split, this will help, I'm sorry, John, this should help.
It's the, you're splitting the bottom.
Yeah, I'm, so you can see the, on the left-hand side, I'm sorry, the aerial would be the best. You're, you see the portion that is below the seventy-two hundred. That is the portion that they're looking to split off from the, from the temple property up to the parking lots.
Do you, do you know how many acres they're splitting to equal the, to add to the existing, to make it the twelve-point-eight-three?
Yeah, the, um, let's see.
Why, I'm sorry, why is the seventy-two hundred in the red box?
Oh, I just highlighted that. It's just because it's highlighted that way in our computer program. The lot area, okay, see, the applicant.
Current configuration is one lot.
The remaining twenty-point-eight-two acres of Temple Bethel property will remain in the exist, existing temple and parking lot area. And I'm sorry, it must be a little bit late. The temple lot, oh, let's see, I'm looking for just the average. I'm so sorry.
Or maybe if we knew the acre.
Four acres.
Oh, it takes, so there's a eight.
Five-point-two-two acre. Let's see, the site amendment proposes a formal adjustment of the property boundaries of the Temple Bethel located at seventy-four hundred Telegraph, following the sale of approximately five-point-zero-two-two acres from the northern portion of the temple's property to Robertson Brothers home. This land will be incorporated into the adjacent enclave, Bloomfield Residential Development. So that is, I'm sorry, that is the approximately five-point-zero-two-two acres.
So, so the existing site is slightly more than?
It will result in, the current Temple Bethel site is twenty-five-point-eight-five acres. The resultant will be twenty-point-eight-two acres. So approximately five acres is what is being sold.
So there's about seven-point-eight-three of the site that somebody else owns. And it'll be combined with the five acres to get to the twelve-point-eight-three. Yeah, that's, I'm trying to do that math.
Correct, correct.
So the, the temple owns the properties, the north of seventy-two hundred and the south. So, yeah, the split is only for this portion, basically, south of seventy-two hundred.
Sorry, I can't see your cursor.
I didn't use a cursor.
Might just walk up there.
We don't own the red box in the middle. We own the north of the red box.
You don't own the red box in the middle.
That's the easiest way to say, that's from another property owner. That's about five acres.
This is the lower exploit, this area through here, up and over. And then the northern part, south of the residential, to the top red line, is the other parcel.
So seventy-two hundred is a box of property that's owned by another entity, entity.
Correct.
Under contract with Robertson.
Correct.
How is that, how did that?
Why don't we have, can I have a speak?
Hold on, hold on.
We tried to acquire all over the last fifty years, but we were able to successful in acquiring the northern piece and then the middle piece was acquired by a speculator. And that's why this has been such a difficult project for us.
Understood, that was a riddle I could not solve.
I didn't understand that. There's two owners.
Well, yeah, but it's bifurcated.
Yeah.
They own the top, not the middle box. Which I couldn't figure out why the middle box was being shown and they own the bottom. Robertson's got it under contract, so they're gonna, they're gonna.
Could you come, could you come to, could you come to podium? Can you speak up here, please?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. So, on behalf of Temple Bethel, Steve Weiner. So we are not giving up any of our parking lot. What we're giving up is a basketball court that hasn't been used in twenty-five years and a bunch of basically brush land.
and a bunch of basically brush land, because we felt that from a security perspective, we would be better off having the development come right to the edge of our property and let them build trees right there, rather than leaving a blank space. Because originally, the original plan, because everybody said this has been worked on for two or three years and we've been thrilled to work with Robertson Brothers. The original plan was they were going to buy our northern parcel of three and a half acres and then the middle piece owned by a third party of about five acres. And that was the development plan. And eventually they said, why don't we assemble additional land coming all the way south to the edge of our parking lot? It increases our security, it makes it easier for them to do the retention basin properly sized, and it, it doesn't leave us with a place where the bad guys can hide. Sorry, but that's the most important thing for us. Thank you so much.
And of course, it provides more property to be developed.
For them, that's the point.
I think I'm going to screen and show you a better, a better idea of where the parking lot in relationship to the proposed enclave development is proposed. Does that assist? You can see the enclave to the north and then the parking lot in the area.
I appreciate the effort, but that's not helpful.
Okay.
The, the other diagram was helpful and the explanation of the property boundaries and stuff. So now, you're going to, you're going to, what you're describing is, is they're cutting into their, their southern property and clipping that.
It's, it's 4.24 acres on the southern parcel of theirs and 3.62 on the north.
All right, let's, let Andrea complete, please.
I don't know, I'm not doing too well.
You're doing great, doing fine.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, it's fine. So I just want to note that this did have an opportunity to be reviewed by our various, by our various departments, noting that they do comply with the provisions of the, the lot split requirements. And we would, this is simply an introduction. The ultimate determination of a lot split would actually go before the township board. So any action from this evening, from the, from the planning commission would be a, if you so decide, it would be forwarding this on to the township board for consideration of the site plan and lot split. And I would believe that a condition of that lot split would be also the approval and development of the enclave development, because they are intertwined.
Just a point of clarification.
Do we, do we not have to, we hear the, we hear your introduction, but do we not have to vote to have, to have a hearing on this? Or is this the hearing?
This is the hearing for the, for the site plan.
No, the lot, the lot split.
The lot split hearing is held at the township board level. So the township board hearing will be at the township.
Why isn't it a public hearing is your question?
That'll be at the town.
What?
Why isn't it a public hearing? Is that your question?
Well, everything's.
You can have a public hearing to the lot split, that's the purpose of tonight's effort. You can have a public hearing tonight for the proposed site plan, because the site plan's being modified. So we are looking at public input as it relates to the modified site plan. So that would be action to evening to have a public hearing related to that. But then the actual lot split determination is heard at the township board on this, on this development.
Well, so, but if we're going to, if we're going to give a recommendation, yea or nay, on that, right? That's what we're going to vote, we'll vote on that.
Correct.
But don't we then have to have a hearing on that to hear what people think? I, I'm not sure I understand the procedure, that's all. After all these years, all these years. Longer than you. Well, not totally.
So the procedure is, okay, so the procedure is this, you, you are being presented the consideration of a site plan, okay? Your site plan consideration is for the reconfigured.
It's for their property without the piece of property.
Okay, so we're not voting on a lot split?
Correct.
Just a site plan if the lot split goes through.
They, they would be tied to one another, yes. One would have to occur, the lot split would have to be approved by the township board in order for the site plan to be acted upon.
Okay, got it.
Hopefully I didn't make that more confusing.
That's more clear.
It's good.
Clear is.
If you voted for one, you vote for the other. I am confused, procedurally, that doesn't make any sense to me. But they're contemporaneous activities. They're not, you're not going to split without the action of, of approved site plan, just like you're not going to consummate the sale without the other.
And that's the intention of tying the site plan to the lot split is for that very reason.
So we're moving this to the board. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Well, not to be hypocritical, I mean, I, I voted no on the, on the other thing, but now that's done. So that's going to happen. So now I'd like, so I'm going to say yes and vote to move that, this part, to the board, to board of trustees to let them, look at it.
Support.
No, I can't make a motion. Chair doesn't ever make a motion.
Josh, there's, I think there's somebody who wants to speak in the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, of course, before you, you're right, I'm sorry. Please, come on up. Jeez, I can always forget that.
It's okay.
Again, name and address in three minutes.
Chris Gagnon, 6529 Cathedral Drive. And I will start this by saying I totally appreciate the rules earlier. The additional 15 seconds was outside of what I was allowed, so completely understand.
At least you, at least you were understanding.
Yes, I, I was, yeah, I don't know about the crowd, but I was understanding. The, so what I was hoping to get, and I, I know, you, you might not have the answers, maybe you will, is since we're talking about the concept of lot splitting, that was something that I did bring up in my speech.
Yeah, that's different, you're.
So that's what I was hoping to get clarification on.
Okay, so I, I believe, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, no.
I believe he's talking about the requirement for a residential lot split. Anytime there's a residential lot split, he was referring to our lot split ordinance, which is part of our general law ordinance. And that speaks to any lots that are created have to meet the average lot area and lot width of all properties within 500 feet. So the intention of that was the township board many years ago wanted to make sure that any single-family residential lot that was created was compatible with what was around it. In this instance, this is a little bit different. This is a lot split associated with an actual site plan. So the provisions you read were regulatory towards a single-family site.
Okay, would you be able to give me the, I guess, the excerpts of the code just so that I could read through that from my own understanding then? Because reading through it myself, I had seen that it was talking about condominium subdivisions, which is what this feels like what it is. And under that context, I would expect that the lot sizes would, would have to meet that average lot area and lot length or width, as you had mentioned. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll stick around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we'll bring it back here.
I make a motion to move forward, favor, recommend to the trustee board, township board, favorable recommendation from the planning board for the lot split.
Support.
And, and approval of the site plan that resulted. You know, I mean, we already did that, but is that, you think that?
Not for the Temple Bethel. We need action on the actual Temple Bethel.
Okay. The Temple Bethel site plan is. It's going to be out of compliance if we don't. Oh, because the Ring Road is changing a lot? No, just because you're changing the site that's already been approved. Okay.
Okay, I'll support that.
All right, move to support, any com, any discussion on the motion? All right, call for vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Good luck.
I know, I'm feeling it. Okay, any, from the board, the commission, any, anything, not on the agenda that you want to bring up? It's the next item. No?
That was good.
No? All right, then we need a motion then to adjourn.
Motion.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks, folks.